Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, 508-548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
This is the regular meeting of the Falmouth Select Board for Monday, September 8th, 2025. The Board has just returned from executive session with respect to a discussion and vote with respect to certain litigation. So I will now call to order the open session, and I'll ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to remind everyone at the start of the meeting, please silence your cell phones and notify the Chair if you're making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. And we will proceed to our agenda, but I do want to mention at the outset that there are petitioners' articles that will be presented this evening. The Board will not be accepting public comment from the audience with respect to those petitioners' articles. Certain members of the Select Board may have questions of the petitioners with respect to the articles, but we're not going to accept public comment from the audience with respect to the petitioner articles. Does there anyone have recognition on the Board?
I have a quick one. I went on the revolutionary tour that the museums on the Green hosted and learned about the Dr. Francis Wicks house. And I was very interested and surprised to learn that Dr. Francis Wicks was a pioneer in the development of the smallpox vaccine back in 1790. Long time we've been using vaccines.
Tell that to... Anyway. So I'd certainly like to recognize the wonderful work of the Commission on Substance Use and the Human Services Department and Susie Hauptman. I had the honor, along with Mr. Richardson, of attending the opioid awareness recognition event on Sunday. And it was certainly a time for sadness, but also a time for celebrating the community and celebrating the recovery community that is here in Falmouth. And it was really a very moving event. Any other recognitions? Okay, I'll just make an announcement, as I'm sure you will hear later this evening. And if haven't seen it, there will be a community forum on Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Gus Candy Center to discuss the noise bylaw that has been proposed and which will be discussed a little later. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just for Board consideration, I do have one item, if I may.
Sure.
I'd request that the Board consider moving a business item, which listed as Item G currently on the business agenda, to Item C to follow immediately the Veterans Council report. And as the Chair recalls, Item G is the consideration of the vote to adopt a revised schedule for November 2025.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there anyone here for public comment this evening? Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. Anyone for public comment? No.
There's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see your...
Good evening. I'm Barbara Samuels from Sharon Ann Lane in East Falmouth. I was here two years ago, practically this very date, when the matter of the Emerald Properties came before the Board. And the Chair of the Board and another member who is no longer on the Board announced that there would be no comment about that matter because there would be no decision made that night. However, during the course of the meeting, a decision was made. The proposal, which had a lot of staff time, had been put into, and a lot of staff gumption had gone into despite coming under attack by some of my more unruly neighbors, the Board decided to table that item. And at the time, I thought, table? That means kill it. And in fact, two years have passed, and we've had a report on town-owned properties that could be suitable for affordable housing. And lo and behold, the Emerald Properties was not mentioned as one of only four properties that were deemed suitable for affordable housing. But I just want to be here and note that. I haven't forgotten it. I drive past that property or walk past it just about every day. It's overgrown, it's unloved, it's one of the more suitable properties for affordable housing you could have. And I just want to say, because I know you're going to be discussing zoning reform later, that it was one of the more disappointing, embarrassing examples of local government that I've seen. And I'm 70 years old, so people haven't forgotten it. I hope you will put it back on your agenda and untable it and move forward with that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? If not, I'll turn it over to Mr. Renshaw with respect to consider a vote to affirm the appointment of the Director of Assessing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Select Board. We're very pleased, excited to bring forward to the Boards for consideration tonight the recommendation of appointments of Ms. Melissa Mata as the Town's Director of Assessing. Mr. Chairman and Select Board, Ms. Mata is a highly qualified tax assessor with over 10 years of experience, is a chief assessor for multiple Massachusetts jurisdictions, and an additional 10 years of related experience working in communities as a field agent. Her experience includes a significant amount of leadership. I'll list just a few examples. Ms. Mata had an opportunity to participate directly in recovering from a particularly malicious ransomware attack in one of her previous jurisdictions. She implemented revaluations that resulted in full and fair-valued assessments in communities and significant new growth opportunities, modernized systems and procedures, which, as you all know, as we begin implementing new software platforms, is an important skillset to have. Ms. Mata is a Massachusetts-accredited assessor and has completed coursework towards two additional Massachusetts assessor certifications. She's been selected to speak, and the interview panel was blown away by this, she's been selected to speak at International Association of Assessing Officers, has been a panelist, a seminar presenter for the Massachusetts Association of Assessing Officers. Subjects that she's presented on include assessing best practices, importantly delivering outstanding customer service, and preventing and recovering from ransomware attacks. As in the case with all potential new employees, Ms. Mata went through a very extensive background and reference check process. We're thrilled to bring her depth, experience, professionalism, very strong technological skills, and truly a passion for teamwork and excellent customer service to our Falmouth Finance Team. Ms. Mata currently resides outside Falmouth, so we're requesting that the Board also consideration of waiving the Division Head residency requirement for her appointment, as stated in Article 5, Section 4 of the Town's Charter. Ms. Mata will seek to relocate to Falmouth. She has told us during the process contingent upon Board's approval of her appointment. And Mr. Chairman and Select Board, if the Board does opt to affirm Ms. Mata's appointment this evening, she has indicated she's prepared to start work later this week. So we think this is very important, because as you all know, our outstanding current chief assessor, Tricia Favouli, is planning her retirement on September 19th. So having a week and a half, two weeks of overlap is going to be significant for us. So with that, Mr. Chairman and Select Board, both the HR Director, myself, and the Assistant Town Manager is recommending that the Select Board approve and affirm the appointment of Ms. Mata as the Town's Director of Assessing. We're also recommending that the Board consideration of waiver of that Division Head residency requirement, as I've indicated previously. And with that, I'd be happy, of course, to answer any questions, but I did want to provide Ms. Mata an opportunity to say a few words to the Board, if she desires.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to speak for a moment. I really appreciate your consideration. Everyone I've met through this process has been wonderful. The town, of course, is wonderful, so I really can't wait to start. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Remember, we need two motions. So is someone ready to make the first motion with respect to affirming the appointment?
I would move that we appoint Ms. Mata as the Director of Assessing and waive the requirement for residency.
I think we need two motions, so just...
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So the second, the first motion. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, Doug, motion with respect to...
I make a motion to waive the residency requirement for Director of Assessing Mata.
And I'll second the second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck and...
Welcome.
Start work tomorrow. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair, the suggestion has been made that before we start the Planning Board meeting, that we go to the consent agenda and get any of those folks out of here as soon as we possibly can. Do you see any objection? Any of the other members see any objection with respect to that?
Any objection from the Planning Board?
Okay, so we're going to move to the consent agenda very quickly. The first matter is licenses. Consider a vote to approve application by the West Falmouth Library at 575 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, for a series of four special one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for events titled Books and Bistro's to be held from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. September 26, 2025, October 25, 2025, January 31, 2026, and March 21, 2026. Under administrative orders, consider a vote to approve a request from the Police Department to expend funds from the DARE grant donations account, 28-10-5210-5780, in the amount of $2,847.02 for the purpose of purchasing items to collaborate with the children of the Falmouth Public Schools. Number two, consider a vote to accept a donation from the New England Endurance Events in the amount of $1,900 to the Beach Donations Account, 28-632-5655-4830, for the Beach Department's support of the annual sprint triathlon at Surf Drive held in 2025 on Sunday, July 13. Number three, consider a vote to approve a water easement for Zero Bigelow Landing Road. Four, consider a vote to approve a conservation restriction for 599 Brickhill Road. Five, consider a vote to approve CPA funding for Phase 2 Perren Headstone Restoration, closed perren of the old burying ground located on Mill Road. Number six, consider a vote to appoint Gene Talbert as a member of the Falmouth Board of Registers of Voters. And number seven, consider a vote to approve the construction of a sidewalk within the layout of the public way on Sandwich Road in connection with the modified comprehensive permit issued to Falmouth Southerly LLC for 375 Sandwich Road.
I do have a question about number seven. If we could just hold that for just a moment?
Okay, we'll hold number seven.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with respect to the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Brown?
I apologize for not answering this earlier, and if you don't have the answer right away, I understand there's nobody from DPW here, but I'm interested to know if the curb will be either a granite or a concrete elevated curb, or is that just an asphalt berm? Is that something that you know?
Granite, yes. So Peter's indicating granite, and that's typically DPW standard in plants, and DPW has reviewed the plant, so granite's not rolled asphalt.
I couldn't quite make it out, the plan was a little fuzzy. Thank you. So I would move approval of item seven.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with respect to item number seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, it is my pleasure to convene a joint meeting, which has been a long time coming, with the Select Board and our esteemed Planning Board. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Drooly to call your meeting to session, and then we can get going.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling tonight's meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board to order. Today is September 8th, 2025. It is approximately 6:48, and we are meeting at Falmouth Town Hall. My name is John Drooly. I am the current Chair of the Falmouth Planning Board. And before we begin, I would like to remind everyone this is a public meeting, and to... I already been told to silence your cell phones. If you wish to speak, you have to come to the podium and tell us your name. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you. So the first matter that we have is to discuss challenges that have been raised to the expansion of housing initiatives caused by drinking water capacity, wastewater management requirements. Mr. Renshaw, would you like to give us some background on that matter?
So, Mr. Chair, I really don't have any comments prepared. I will advise the Board, and you've probably seen in your packets, we've included a 2024 water study report that was prepared by our consultants, Tata and Howard. So that's included in your packets as a reference.
Okay, so the conclusion of that report was that there is sufficient water capacity through 2045, I believe, with anticipated population increases. Now, you know, some people may have questions with respect to that particular determination, but that's what we are acting under at this point. So I turn it over to people on the Planning Board to see what questions you might have. Ms. Kerfoot?
Does this include all sources that we currently use, which includes the base that we've been using for quite some time to supplement our water? And does it project the opening of the Asshumet Well, which I believe is currently being applied for to ascertain that it is okay to use? Do you know if that, this report includes all of that or not?
So, Mr. Chair? I don't... Great question. My understanding, this does not include any projections to open the Asshumet Well. I know that has been in discussions for a while. I don't think this 2024 report anticipates or projects that. But beyond that, I do believe it projects the use of all the other available water sources, but not the Asshumet Well.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
The reason that I ask this question is that there was an article, I think, two weeks ago in The Enterprise, where the USGS had done a LiDAR survey of Long Pond, which is our primary source of water. And right now, we are at 3.2, 3.5, whatever it is, and zero being sea level. And it was stated that if we reach minus 3.5, we can no longer use that water supply. Now, I would posit that we are already in danger, because there was nowhere in that article that it stated whether, being at 3.5, we have some saltwater intrusion coming our way, because we are down low with the drought. So that question is alive and well, wide open to answer as to when we truly are going to impinge upon our fresh water.
Is this something that your Board will take into consideration as applications come before you?
We can't.
They have to have water.
That's the problem. We are hamstrung by the bylaws that we operate under. And nowhere does it say, oh, you've got to... They did this in Florida a while ago. Nowhere in our bylaws does it say, before you can approve anything, you have to prove that you have enough fresh water to serve us what you are approving.
Could I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
I'd like to see us, at some point, make a determination of when we're going to sunset using potable water for irrigation systems. We could make a ruling today and say, three years from now, you're not going to be able to use your potable water source, your town water, for irrigation. That gives people time to drill a well if they feel like they really have to have irrigation. I mean, at some point, it doesn't seem sustainable to keep using potable water for irrigating lots. It's just one thought.
Anyone else have any points or questions on the Board here, and then we'll go to the Planning Board?
I mean, I just think it shows the importance of pursuing sewer-ing as much as possible and to preserve and to, you know, I know, we'll hear about this more later with some of the zoning articles for town meeting, but, you know, I think it shows the importance of when we're, where we're developing, you know, I don't like the term, that it makes sense, because it's associated with nimbyism a lot, but, you know, that we are really being forward-thinking. And I think it's something that we should think about in our strategic planning session coming up, of how do we look at housing and water holistically and how they work together? Because you're right, you are bound, but we can kind of set the policy there in how we pursue this.
And may I add to that? Sewering is not the total answer, because what's being proposed now is dumping it out into the ocean. So you're dumping a current resource that is being replenished by all septic systems, because they go down into the groundwater and they filter through. When you do that, you're dumping it out into the ocean. You're not making it capable of being reused. There was, a number of years ago, when Ray Jack was here, he was wanting to put injection along Route 151, I believe, so that it would filter as it came down towards our water supply. So I've just leaned those over all these years, and so I'm throwing this out since we're on this topic.
It's also being married to a water expert doesn't hurt.
Yeah, a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
The other thing I think this points to is the need to think beyond Falmouth and more regionally when it comes to water. You know, what happens in Mashpee affects what happens in Falmouth. And, you know, related to this, I just want to commend the effort of Falmouth's delegates, the Assembly of Delegates, Dan Gessen, who has been proposing a real estate transfer fee, where a percentage of high, a percentage of expensive real estate sales would go towards building housing and cleaning up affordable water. So I want to commend him for his efforts on that, and it shows the need to think regionally in our housing and water crisis that we have.
Is there anyone else on the... Yes, sir.
To dovetail with Pat's comments about drought, I didn't see anything in this report about any modeling for drought situations where we could end up with seven, eight, 10 years of drought, what happens when that happens, and getting back to where we should be able to discern whether development or whatever is being built has access to water supply. And if we haven't got that information, we can't make those kinds of decisions. But I really think we should have some modeling done to take into account the drought fee and water, I mean, everything is going.
Thank you.
I would echo that and build on that to say, yeah, I didn't see anything in this report about changing water regimes, which we know is some of the most present-day impact of climate change, in addition to potential saltwater intrusion as sea level rises and water resources change. So I think it is really important that we do get a more nuanced, forward-looking understanding of what those resources might look like. At the same time, I guess I would caution against an overly simplistic, this is the water we have, therefore this is the housing that we will allow, kind of thinking, understanding that there are a lot of different ways to access water and create drinking water, and also to conserve the water that we have, as Mr. Brown was mentioning, whether that's restricting the uses of potable water, whether that's creating incentive or disincentive programs for water conservation, or if necessary, thinking about other, more expensive than rainfall, but ways of actually deriving fresh water for our needs. And so I think, I think this is a fabulous development, that we actually have these two boards in conversation this evening, because I think it really needs to be a back-and-forth about how we want the town to develop and how we meet the needs of that development, not a kind of simplistic line, line in the sand of how much we will or will not develop based on our current water resources.
If I could just throw out one more thing about water. During our discussions of the planning for the sewer-outfall pipe, I asked Amy Lowell, the Waste War Superintendent, if it was possible to incorporate another line coming back toward East Falmouth that would potentially reuse some of that water rather than going to the outfall. And she cautioned against doing that in conjunction with this project, because she said it's a whole different project, and it can be done, but it should be done later, not to conflict with the current project. So that's something we can take up later on down the road, because she said it's also a very expensive process, but it may be worth pursuing later on if we feel like we're being wasteful and we want to bring some of that water back, maybe put it on a couple of golf courses or maybe some other big users that we could think of.
Okay, any more questions on this particular item? Mr. Kornak, would you mind coming up to the podium just to be there as we proceed with these next few items?
Sure, thanks.
Thank you. So, you know, the next items on the agenda were really a compilation of what I have seen as some of the suggestions that have been discussed around town with respect to increasing our housing stock for affordable housing, as well as for housing in the missing middle. And that's why they're listed here. I don't think we have to, you know, stay to any particular order, but I'm certainly, you know, as you are the Board that will be making the ultimate decision with respect to the zoning reforms that are suggested. I'd like to turn it over, John, to you and your committee, if they have any thoughts or comments on any of these matters, just let's get them out there. Okay, thank you.
Jed, you want to talk a little bit about duplexes?
Right, so for the record, Jed Kornak, Community Development Director. As the Planning Board knows, but perhaps others may not, duplexes currently, right now, are allowed in the majority of zoning districts in town by right. This change, or this potential change, would impact four specific zoning districts. That would be the agricultural double A, agricultural single A, agricultural B, and potentially the senior care retirement sub-district. I say potentially, because as you're aware, we made some amendments to that sub-district, that area up in North Falmouth, which essentially allows single-family homes as it is, but it's a limited scope of what's actually allowed within that district. So essentially, what I'm trying to say is that duplexes could be, if the Planning Board, through a public hearing process, heard that folks wouldn't be opposed to it, could be allowed by right in, you know, three more zoning districts and really open up opportunity throughout town.
John?
Yes, Charlotte?
I don't think everyone is aware of the status of these as recommendations coming from a governor's advisory committee. Some people have seen the list and thought that perhaps, like the new ADU law, that it's actually a law, but they're not. So I wonder if we could have an explanation of the status of these suggestions? Where did they come from? And what would need to be done for them to be effective in this town?
Are you referring specifically just to the duplex item currently?
No, I'm referring to A through G, so just so that we all understand where they stand right now in Falmouth.
Well, I can give you a brief overview of essentially where they're at currently. So duplexes and triplexes, as you can see on the agenda, this change would affect our zoning bylaw in a way to essentially allow them. 40 Y starter homes are currently not allowed within the town. Transfer development rights, and I'll be as brief as I can. Transfer development rights, and I'll be as brief as I can. Transfer development rights currently exists within our zoning bylaw, but in my opinion, there's some flaws with that, with that overlay district simply because of all of its requirements. So we currently do have that on the books, but we essentially restrict the use of that too much. Seasonal communities, that's a brand-new program. I think a lot of the communities in Massachusetts are interested in what that actually means, the benefits of that. There is some information on the state's website about what it means, essentially, and, you know, we can certainly get to that, but we have not opted in currently. The conversion bylaw, which really is just a conversion of a dwelling use. The town meeting approved some changes to that use in April of '24. So we made, the planning board made it a bit easier to use and made it a little bit more consistent language. And then lastly, the pre-approved ADU plans. The Cape Cod Commission's working through that with a regional housing strategy. It's essentially a regional housing plan. Part of that effort was a recommendation to make permitting more streamlined. This is one of those ways to do it. And I don't believe the comprehensive plan, short-term rental, those are not things that you're looking for an update on.
Just to be clear, these, this is like a menu of options, of ways that this town could decide. The state is not mandating change.
Correct.
Yeah. As, as I said, I mean, I think what, what this, what this list reflects are some of the items that I have seen people discussing as possible zoning reforms, many of them emanating from the governor's, you know, bill, but certainly it's something that the town has to, you know, agree to. I'll ask Mr. Richardson with respect to his involvement with the state representatives, where we are with seasonal community regulation?
Yeah, so I actually had a meeting on this with draft regs with E O H L C the other day, and they said by, hopefully, the latest, they said, was mid-October, so it's right around the corner. To the extent, the incentives are helpful, we will see, but it, it does not seem that, the criteria or the holdups they put on Falmouth don't seem to be that significant to me. Falmouth will qualify. That is not a question. We will be a seasonal community. It's like, like, in terms of fitting the criteria.
We would be able to opt in as to what they want if we make that decision.
If we make that decision. I personally think we should make that decision, but we'll come to that road when we get there.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Fox.
I see a, a conflict of logic here. We're, have recently now passed a law from direction from the state that everybody's allowed to have an ADU for their primary home, for their primary site, that every site can have it. And now, we're also going to say that every site can be divided by, in two, and become duplexes and have two primaries. There's that, which can be subdivided and sold up as residents. And now we are basically saying, if you follow the extreme logic, that one is becoming four. That each lot could be separated into two, and they all can have an accessory. I don't see any talking about this or the logic of it. I mean, everyone talks about how great this whole thing sounds. I don't think they followed it all the way through, and I, I bring this up all the time. I've never gotten a straight answer on it yet.
That's why we're having this meeting, Mr. Fox.
I mean, I, my response is, is where's the pushback? I mean, you're creating the opportunity to build more housing. I mean, I understand your concern is larger scale overdevelopment, but I mean, I, I, the scenario is run up a lot, and I just don't see that actually happening anywhere where that, all those tools are unlocked and all of a sudden, you know, you're building New York City. I mean, I just don't think that happens.
No, no, I wasn't saying New York City. I'm saying right now, every house in Falmouth can already have an ADU. It's not New York. And we're about to say that every, I thought I heard our planner say that every single-family lot become two. That's not New York. That's here. That's now.
But it's already, it's already permitted in almost every residential district right now, according to what Mr. Kornak just said. We're just, we're just questioning whether that should be changed.
Is it really permitted right now? Is every single-family home now eligible for a duplex in Falmouth?
No, no. I, so, just to clarify, every zoning district has the ability
That's what I meant.
to build a duplex, with the exception of the ones that I listed previously.
But how do they do that, though? What do you mean they have the ability? Doesn't town meeting have to approve it? Do we have to change it?
No, it's, it's just an allowed use.
So every single-family lot can now have a duplex?
No. Single-family lots, with the majority of zoning districts in town, have the ability, not if they currently have a single-family home, they just have the ability to build a duplex on their property if they so choose.
Well, I take exception to your language saying, let's talk about the percentage of lots that are zoned single-family in A, B, and C compared to the others, and talk about the, the lots. I think there's far more lots that are single-family and don't have that. You're saying in the business zone and these other zones, but that's not the majority of the lots. That's the majority of zoning districts. Now, talk about the math and not Lang English. And I'm talking about, that's what I'm concerned about. I hear what you're saying, but I don't really hear anyone talking about the fundamental understanding. If that's the case, then we have residential zones, A, B, and C, not kind of general residential. That is the majority of the town. Take a look at the amount of lots that exist under that, and talk about the number of lots and not the zoning of the districts. If you took a look at our other districts, they're so small in numbers, I think it gets overwhelmed. I think we're talking about semantics and math, and they're not matching up, and that's my point.
Okay.
So what the discussion is supposed to be, Jim, is, as it says here, I write in all zoning districts. That's what we're going to discuss. They're not saying that it's allowed, as explained. And I, I agree with you, in most places, it's not allowed.
I just thought I heard him say it was allowed, and I just thought I heard one of the selectmen say it was allowed.
It's a discussion item, Jim.
I'd heard differently.
Read it, it says.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Brown.
I think what we're looking at here today is proposed legislation from the governor that's up for us to decide if we want to adopt. Is that not correct?
I think this is just a list of potential options to look at for zoning changes.
Right.
So my impression was, do, does the community want to think about allowing duplexes essentially throughout town, wherever single-family homes are allowed by right? The three zoning districts, thank you, the three zoning districts for which it is not allowed currently by right are the agricultural double A, single A, and B. It's also not allowed in the senior care retirement sub-district, but that's a separate conversation. So if the community was to be in favor of that, the simple zoning change that would come before town meeting would be a use table that shows a Y for duplexes in those agricultural districts that I've just described.
And if I can paraphrase for Jim, what he is stating is that those three zoning areas are a majority of where our buildable lots are. Unused buildable lots.
Okay. I, I, I don't know that for sure, but
For to get duplexes used, it would have to be approved by town meeting because those are where most of the lots are that we can build on, vacant lots.
So essentially, you're just allowing a property owner to decide that they would like to have a duplex on, on their property.
Now, are we talking rentals, or are we talking condos?
We're, we don't get into the specifics. It's two-family dwelling.
I wonder if you could help me read this chart. On it, it's all little tiny print, and even with my reading glasses on, it says here, I think what we're looking at is semi-detached and two-family dwelling.
Correct.
That would be a duplex. So in that column, it looks as if there's an NNN, no, not allowed, in the agricultural districts, as you just said.
Correct.
But then reading across, where do I run onto the other Ns? And there are Ns, if I'm reading it right, single-use, double A, that's residential, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
And that also has an N. So right now, it would appear that duplexes are not allowed in residential, single-use residential. Or, so that's double A, A, and B, that's, and then going forward, where there are more Ns. Most of the residential zones don't allow these, semi-detached and two-family dwellings. That's the way the chart reads. Is that wrong?
I don't have the chart in front of me, but my recollection was that it's only not allowed in the agricultural districts.
Okay, well, let's go by the chart because it came out of the zoning book. So if we use the chart, what we're really thinking about is, do we want now to think about having duplexes in regular residential districts? And
I see where you're getting at.
Yeah, and I'd like to comment on that.
Yep.
I would have a problem with that. It would seem to me that the people who have invested in a, a residential zone expecting it to be a single-use house, one house per lot in that zone, it would appear like, almost like a taking, that now it could be two. All it would take is a change of ownership, and the next owner could do that, so your neighbor changes something. It just seems it would be quite a, a change for this town, in the character of the town. And one of the responsibilities of the, of the planning board is to try to protect the character of the town. And it would be a huge change.
So I think a, a response easy to that is, you know, that's the public hearing process. So obviously, if the planning board's open to that type of concept, they would have a, a public hearing, and folks would be invited to come and provide input on, do we think duplexes should be allowed in those districts?
You know, I think we should just step back for a minute. I mean, I don't think we wanted to necessarily argue or the merits of, of each and every one of these items. I think we just wanted to try to discuss on a global basis some of these thoughts that have been circulating around town, that I think all of the members on the select board and many of them have, have heard from some of our residences. These are ideas that may help in this, in this housing situation that we have, rather than getting into the weeds of one particular one or the other. So, you know, I think going forward, we should try to speak a little bit more generally as to, you know, the process and what people might, you know, think about, you know, again, in a, in a broad sense, rather than, you know, in looking at the zoning classification necessarily and having discussions.
Thank you, Bob, and I'll keep that in mind. I think you're right. But I do think one of the things that can come out of this is this board talking with your board to get a sense of where the boards are on them, not just, and to understand what they are. So it's important that this duplex thing would impact our residential zones, not just the agricultural zones. That's an important fact to bring out as we meet together, and also to get a sense of what the board members think about them.
I think it's, it's difficult to really narrow it down because our use tables doesn't show the duplex here. We're taking a guess that the multifamily would address that. Am I right? Where would I see duplex listed on this chart?
Be two-family.
Two-family.
Semi-detached and two-family dwelling.
Okay, sorry, top line. Excuse me.
Mr. Goldstone?
So, first of all, I really appreciate the discussion with the, the eye to detail and the experience that the planning board brings to this. In, I, I think the, getting at the question and getting more clarity on how changes in zoning for duplex, triplex, multifamily, and how that interacts with the ADU by right is certainly an important thing to, to get some clarity on. I, in, in my, tell me if I'm wrong here, but, but I feel like the number of empty buildable lots we have in town, especially in our residential areas, is small enough that a change in the allowable use would have much less of an impact than actually the conversion, the change in the conversion bylaw, right? And enabling more existing properties to convert from single-dwelling to duplex, triplex, or multifamily use in those areas. Would that, that be an accurate estimate?
Did you say it would have more of an impact?
That would have more, there, there would be more opportunities for densification
Absolutely, yes.
under a conversion scenario as opposed to the allowable use, adding duplexes as an allowable use.
I would think of it as the opposite. So if you start allowing additional uses, you've opened the ability for property owners to rethink their properties. And to, if they have a single-family home, but they want to turn that into a, a triplex, and you've allowed that by right, you've now allowed for more opportunity for people to expand upon that. The conversion bylaw, or stop saying a bylaw, conversion use is somewhat limiting because of the factor of cost. So what we've understood is that those are traditionally large homes that are, they were single families. Now they want to convert them up to four units. In doing so, there's a substantial cost with, for example, fire protection. So fire suppression systems. So that's been a prohibitive measure in terms of getting people to actually do that conversion. We haven't seen a lot of conversions that I'm aware of. So if we allow a wider variety of allowable uses by right, in my opinion, you, you open up the market a bit better in that way than you would in a conversion scenario.
Okay. I mean, I guess I would just say, and to the point of, of getting a sense where this board's members are, speaking for myself, I think creating options to increase densification in our already residential areas is something really important that we need to do. And I guess I would respectfully push back on the idea that having two families on a lot is in some way, I think the implication is that, does it impact the community? I, I guess so. But does it negatively impact that community? Having lived in a duplex or triplex situation, it's a different way of having neighbors. You know, it's, it's not necessarily, I, I, I think in most of these cases, we would be expecting that those would be long-term residents and members of the community. And, and rather than eating into undeveloped land, I would like to see us pursue ways to, to increase the density of our already residential areas, but that's, that's me.
I, I 100% echo that, and I think that you're right. We need to unlock opportunity to do these, and as you mentioned, there's always a, yes, the things can get approved. You know, we're just giving people the right to do things. I do have a question about, and I could be totally wrong here, but the proposed ADU zoning bylaw.
Right.
So the Affordable Homes Act passed allows for two. It needs a special permit for the second one on a property. It's my understanding that the proposal for, for town meeting is only one?
That's correct.
Is, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, simply to make sure that, because the Affordable Homes Act actually allows for two or more. So it is entirely possible that multiple property owners could develop multiple ADUs on their property. And the planning board just simply doesn't have rules around that. We don't have, well, the board doesn't have a cap, a number of units that they would entertain. And there's really no decision criteria put in place in terms of the allowable size because anytime you get past the first ADU, the town has total control over the size, all of the components that would come into play. So we just don't have those rules yet.
So, so why don't, would those rules be coming from the state, or would the town just be allowed to make those rules?
The town's allowed to make those rules.
So then, if that's the case, then why not just have it be two? Because if, is, and thank you for your expertise on this because I clearly don't have any. But under that way, is, if you do it by two, does that then not give the town control on the second one? My understanding, it's a second, separate application, separate.
So, so the way the board has brought this amendment forward is to take a first step in clarifying the current ADU bylaw to make it completely consistent with state law. Then, over the course of likely the summer or the spring, the planning board will start a conversation about that second, third, et cetera, start developing those rules, and then potentially bring it to town meeting.
So that would be for April town meeting?
Potentially.
Potentially?
Potentially.
Okay. I mean, if it lined up like that, I, I understand that more. I, for me, I just want to echo Vice Chair Goldstone's comments, and this is, we're in a housing crisis. My generation is completely priced out, and I'd be doing a disservice to my peers and my friends if I didn't advocate for the, the boldest possible solutions to address this, this housing crisis. I'm particularly fond of the 40 Y starter homes, which I understand are new, but I think that is a bold initiative and would make a lot of sense in a lot of areas of town if we, if we pursue those.
I was going to just try to direct the conversation to the 40 Y issue and see how the members of the planning board feel about it. Mr. Jewely?
We really haven't had many discussions on that yet.
But knowing the concept, I mean, just without locking anyone into a, a position necessarily, but just chatting amongst ourselves, curious to know how some of the members feel about, about the concept.
I like the idea. That was one thing I could easily review. My computer wouldn't let me open all these reports today, so I'm sorry, but I did, could access that on my cell phone, and I asked for a summary of it. And I like the idea. The question is, exactly? The question is exactly where we would get these one-acre lots that suddenly we plunked down for houses. And there, considering what we talked about originally, there would have to be limitations based upon, is it on a sewer? Do we have sufficient water? And do we want to put a little colony together? And where could we do that of one-acre lots? So there are many questions that would have to be answered, but I really liked the concept of the starter homes. And could, could we somehow, totally antithetical to the American greed system, could we control the prices so that they cannot go higher and higher and higher if we have that as a zoning bylaw?
And I think, I think to echo that, that is one of the most important points. And not only that, I'll be interested to what the short-term rental advisory committee comes to as well, and I think this is where the state legislature, to what they can, can step in, because I'm worried that we're gonna keep seeing what continues to happen, where the rich come in and they just buy it, and then, great, we just made a bunch of housing, we just made it easier for the rich to continue to profit off our struggle. So whatever way the legislature, my boss, hello, can, can change that, I think that's important too, because you're right, we need to make sure that these are actually affordable. And that's what, you know, we all want to address the, the crisis at hand.
There was a story in the paper, and I think I have the, the facts correct, but the state of Utah recently passed a law that was gonna dedicate something like $35 million over the next 10 years for affordable housing, whether it's starter homes or whatever. But they capped the price at, at $400,000. So it's certainly something that, you know, has legs, at least in some places. Anyone else?
Charlotte, was it Charlotte, or Jim?
On this issue, I'd like to point another conflict that I see in our bylaws. Now, this is only my understanding from it, and some of you learned it, people may see it better, but I believe we have a restriction on flow-neutral bylaw on anything tied into the sewer. And they are capped at four units, no matter what size the lot is.
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms, that's right, four bedrooms. 440 gallons of flow. And then our Board of Health kicks in, if there's any increase in flow, it, it, it can't happen on the sewer because we're tied down by the flow-neutral bylaw, which we have to come to your board to get a waiver for if anybody wants to do that. I, I believe in my understanding, I had a conversation with Jed and other people, that I've realized that we have these really lots that, big lots that aren't on the sewer, and they're not restricted. And they could have, if they can design a septic system, gets by the Board of Health, and they could do the setbacks, they can have six, seven, eight, nine bedrooms, they could get larger and larger. And, or they could have more of these, these tiny houses. And then what we're doing is, I believe that tiny houses, when I worked on the comprehensive plan, were designed to be closer to the center of town, where people could walk, public transportation, and created little villages. And I believe, I may be wrong, but I'd like to someone show me, again, the language and the math, I believe that we could, way out in Hatchville, we could put huge areas of tiny houses. And now we're creating new villages away from public transportation, creating all the reasons why in our comprehensive plan, especially Pat talked about how growth in small, little zones around our villages, now we're saying, no, that's where the sewers are, we can't have the growth. We're now gonna push the growth way out, out into Hatchville, actually above where our aquifer is. So I believe this hasn't been thought out. I'm not totally against it, but I just, I'm a practitioner of these things, and I try to make these things happen all the time. I see some real conflicts in the theory and the math, and I hope that somehow, especially your board that's gonna be approving these things for town meeting, takes a look at some of these things. Because I think if you ask Jed right now, and I've already asked him the question, you can't, if, if you're on the sewer, you can't have more than four bedrooms. But if you're not on the sewer, and you can get the right amount of setbacks, and to design a septic system, gets the Board of Health, you're gonna have 15 bedrooms if you have enough land.
Just to clarify though, tiny homes and starter homes are different concepts, right? Starter, tiny homes are the size of the house, starter homes, I just want to clarify.
I'm not talking about the size of the house.
But you're, you're, you're mentioning tiny homes, and I just want to make sure people understand.
I'm talking about bedrooms.
We're talking about the size of the, of what's on the lot.
My comment, I'm sorry, I didn't mean tiny homes.
That's, that's what I, yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify, Mr. Fox, that's all.
Let's take the tiny homes out of it, because I thought maybe they could have two or three bedrooms in these tiny homes, but let's take that out.
Because there are people concerned about tiny homes.
I'm only concerned about my understanding of what I hear you folks talking about right now, and the math. And I don't think it's been thought out.
That's why we're here.
Well, I brought it up before, and it's not going anywhere.
One of the things in all these discussions about affordable housing that never gets mentioned is why has Falmouth become so unaffordable? And Josh kind of touched on it, it's money. You have a lot of money coming into this town, people buying up houses, tearing them down, building McMansions, which increases the property values all around it. You know, my little 956 square foot house in Hatchville, if I sold it for $500, someone comes in, tears it down, that lot is now a $550,000 lot. And that's what's causing the increase. And I think there are ways through zoning that we can affect the mansionization of properties. You can do it through volumetric formulas, you can do it with increased setbacks, I mean, there are a number of ways we could, we can do this, because we need to curb this excessive growth of homes in, in this town that are way over the affordable limit for most people. I mean, what's good, the average house is going for what, 1.1 million now? I mean, it's ridiculous.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm 100% agree. And, and, you know, I find this inappropriate to mention, again, I spoke at a Labor Day rally the other day, and I, and I mentioned this, it's majority second homes that are being purchased. And that's why I think it's so important that, you know, at the county level, we get a real estate transfer fee, but at the town level, that our board pushes for a residential exemption so we can tax these separately and increase the revenue so the people who live here can actually afford to live here, and hopefully genuinely dissuade the, in whatever way we can, because I understand legislatively it's a little difficult, from the amount of second homes, you know, since the pandemic, it's risen a significant percent. And I think you're right, that that is a key part of the problem, bigger than this discussion itself, but that, that is, you're absolutely right, and I 100% agree with you there.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like us to consider that a lot of our residential areas are two-acre zoning, and I wonder if we could provide an incentive for anybody who might be in a position to subdivide their lot to provide a space for one of these tiny homes, so that they can be more dispersed around the community, rather than trying to focus on creating villages of them. Because nobody really likes 40B the way it operates, but there's one good thing about it, it brings people of lower income into life with people with higher income, and enables, you know, better community interrelations for everybody. So I would like to see you guys maybe think about whether or not there's some areas in town that would be usable for, maybe they would, you'd offer it, you wouldn't change the zoning, but say maybe it's a zoning, a rezoning eligible district, or, I don't know what you'd come up with, I haven't really thought it through, but I just, trying to think of ways to intersperse these smaller units, maybe tiny homes could be part of it, or Y, starter, Y, 40Y starter homes, maybe they could be dispersed around the community somehow, rather than pockets.
Does the transfer of development rights have some way to do that, Mr. Brown suggested?
Not currently, no.
Not, not as it's currently, but it could be. I mean, that could be something to, to look at, that statute or that, that provision that might incentivize what you're referring to.
Right.
Not currently.
I think Charlotte has an idea.
Charlotte, and then Bob again.
I'd like to build on Doug's point. Not stated clearly in this, but sort of implicit in it, is zoning things in such a way that, that you can only have tiny houses in a certain place, you can only have starter homes in a certain place. And I, I would prefer, as, as Doug is talking about, that we have more inclusive zoning. There is no reason that we cannot have tiny houses wherever somebody wants to put a tiny house, and we should be thinking about enabling that. So there wouldn't be just one area of town that's reserved for tiny houses. There's something wrong with that, that idea. And one of the things, as I was thinking, you know, how annoyed I was by that idea, that we could enable people to do, to create an easier process for hiving off a piece of your land, even if you don't own two acres. Maybe you own less than that, and you're willing to hive off a piece. The ADU law, I think as it goes into operation, is going to really change things. But the thing that will slow it down is, they're not cheap to build. You know, they still cost money. You're gonna have to do something about it. Not everybody has that money, but they might want to stay where they are and still be able to make some money on their own land. If you could let people hive off a little bit of land, they could sell it to someone who does have the money to build on that, and they could stay right in their own house, so that they've made money on their lot, the way an ADU could allow you, allow you to do, you've added to the density in your neighborhood, you've gone through a process, the state now says you can do, so it's possible, but you haven't forced them to be in one part of town. I just think it's a prettier idea. And I, I would hope that the zoning board would be working on that, and that you all would be open to supporting it.
Bob?
Yeah. One other thing that never gets mentioned is changes that need to happen at the state level. And one of the biggest things in my mind is the squatters law in this state. If you take over somebody's car, you jump in their car and, and push them out and hijack it, that's a criminal offense. If you move into someone's house and hijack their house, it's a civil offense, and it's up to you to hire the lawyer in order to get people out. We need to change that law, because there's a lot of disincentive for people to rent in this state. In my family alone, we have, my brother, between my brothers and my cousins, we have five vacant apartments, and they won't rent them out because they've been burned so bad by tenants. So we need to do something to protect landlords some. Tenants seem to have more rights than landlords in this town, in the state. And we need to do something to change that at the legislative level. And I think the first place to start is the squatters bylaw. Other states have it, and Massachusetts should.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One more thing I'll mention that isn't in our discussion, but I think is important, is today, Mass, NAHR of the Housing Authorities, they have their annual conference today in, at the, the Seacrest. And I think it's important that public housing, and we support our housing authorities in ways that we can redevelop their properties, because frankly, they're run down and, and need work, or they're just not built for proper density. So I think that in whatever ways the town can, without infringing on, you know, their mission and what they do, whatever ways that we can support our housing authority to improve their operations, I think we should, we should do that.
That's a good point, and if I could.
Yep.
Would homeowners be able to attach an ADU to these starter homes?
I can't see why they wouldn't, considering that ADU is a by-right use. One thing I will mention about the starter home or the 40Y concept is that the zoning, in order to essentially adopt it, you need to create a zoning district. So you have two options in, in that. You can essentially, as you can see on the screen, take one of the zoning districts that currently exist within town, replace it with this new 40Y district, or you can adopt it as an overlay. And so, you know, it's preliminary, but it's another flexible option, just like the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, that overlays the existing underlying zoning, and it gives a property owner two options, essentially. Stick with the ground rules or use the overlay district. I think that the 40Y starter home system could be adopted as an overlay district, provided the planning board agrees, and we hear it through the planning, or through the public hearing process. And yes, if someone were to build a starter home, which is restricted in size, I can't see a way where they would be restricted to not have a by-right ADU on their property as well.
So there could be possibly four ADUs in four starter homes? Or would it just be one ADU on that property with those four starter homes?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's worth, you know, delaying that answer to dig into the details of the bylaw itself before, you know, committing to something like that. But, you know, as we know, ADUs are a by-right use, so we, we really need to be careful when considering it.
Jim?
I, I believe there is some, on your question, I believe the current bylaw does give us some protection, because the AD law says it has to be no more than 50% of the primary structure, so if you have a little tiny house that's 400 feet, your ADU is gonna be 200 feet. So I don't think that's as much of a problem as some of the other mathematical errors that are in the law. And one, one of the things I want to make sure we're all talking about, we keep talking about these tiny homes, I'm not talking about the size of the house, I'm talking about the number of bedrooms. And the conflict that I see is our ability from our Board of Health and to allow the flow, the flow with the flow-neutral bylaw, or the protecting our, our ponds with the number of bedrooms. I don't really care, I mean, I do care about the size of the house, but I don't really think that's the point. I think it's the, it's, it's the, the conflict of the Board of Health rules and Title V and our ponds protection, and it really doesn't matter how big the house is, it's how many bedrooms the house has in it. And that's really where, where the, where the issues come from. And you can, oh, it's nice to have a cute little tiny house, but talk about the number of bedrooms. That's really, I think, what the issue is, if you're talking about protecting the environment, protecting our ponds, our ponds, the total nitrogen limits on our, our town, they don't care about the size, that, the size of the house doesn't impact that, it's the number of bedrooms. So we keep throwing it around, I think we should focus on the number of bedrooms as much as, as the size of the house. Cute little tiny houses are, are nice, but they probably have at least two bedrooms in them, or maybe it's only one, but still, three tiny houses, that's three more bedrooms, that's the, it's the flow, it's a nu, it's the nitrogen loading that we're really talking about, that I think that influences both our water protection and our ponds. And that's really where I'm coming from, not the size of the house or the cuteness of the little house, it's, it's protecting our environment, and that's, that's what I, I thought our zoning and our Board of Health was trying to do. And that's why I wanted to just point that out, when you talk about tiny houses, we really should be talking about the number of bedrooms.
Anybody else? I think when we're talking about tiny houses, we're trying to get tiny prices. And historically, on Cape Cod, they figure three bedrooms, six people living in the house, and we usually have two people to, to a three-bedroom house, not six people. So a lot of things really aren't, aren't the way they should be. And we talk about tiny houses, tiny lots, we're not talking about tiny prices. That's really the, the issue here, is, as you mentioned, your generation's been priced out. The last five years, the average sale price of a house on Cape Cod has doubled, went from $450 to $900,000. Is it gonna double again in the next five years, or go 50%? You, you, you can't hardly find a lot in the town of Falmouth for sale, vacant lot for under $250,000. So if you buy that and you buy, and you build a tiny house on it, you're still into it for about $600,000, $700,000, and then somebody's gotta make a profit. So it's really, it's a very difficult problem, and partly because we've all worked so hard and been so diligent to make the town of Falmouth such a wonderful place to live. And people want to live here. This is a capitalist society, so unless you limit the sale prices and, and give developers incentives, density, and like a 40B law, without something like that, there's gonna be a very, very difficult problem to solve, if at all.
So we're gonna take two more comments on this, and then I think we have a couple of other matters, but we also have a very long agenda, so, Ms. Ferris?
I just wanted to say, because I sense that our time is running out, Falmouth is in safe harbor at the moment. We've reached our 10%, or we have a plan to get to 10% that allows us safe harbor. So I was curious, you know, we're sort of part of the Upper Cape, how is the rest of the Upper Cape doing on that? Not too well. Mashpee, Sandwich, Borne, they don't appear to be even trying to get to safe harbor. So we're kind of way ahead of the other communities. This housing problem is enormous. This board has worked actually to try to help solve it. But I sense that it's a regional issue, that we, and working with the base to see if we can get housing up there, working with the other communities so they might feel the same kind of urgency that they're willing to sacrifice some of the wonderfulness of their town to be able to have more people. It's a regional problem, and how can we address that really effectively? It would appear that we might be heading into hard financial times. So that's going to curtail building anyway. We might have a breather, and we'll wait and see what the ADU law does to our density here in Falmouth, and how people adapt to it and use it, so we have time to study that. But I think, I hope that your board would be working on making this a regional issue. How can we work with the other towns so that the Upper Cape develops uniformly? That would be good.
Very good point. Ms. Goldstone, and then we'll move on.
Well, it might help us move to the next agenda item, actually, because my, my question is, and I, I and I really appreciated Ms. Harris's comments about not creating little starter home districts and putting, essentially creating segregated neighborhoods in our community. And also hearing, not surprisingly, really thoughtful, insightful ideas about how we set up our town more generally in terms of where we have density and where, you know, these are zoning questions, planning questions. So how much of this might come into our comprehensive planning or be addressed through the comprehensive planning process in a way that is a more holistic and forward-looking as opposed to kind of a piecemeal, trying to change a whole bunch of things one at a time? And where does that effort stand? And I don't know if that's for Mr. Druley or for Mr. Cornock or?
I could certainly answer for you. The short answer is all of it. That the local comprehensive plan is the community's plan for growth in all aspects. Waste water, water usage, transportation, housing, land use in general. It is the essential booklet, if you will, for how the community plans to grow for the next, typically it's 10 to 15 years. It can be longer, certainly. So knowing that and knowing that we have all of these challenges, we started the agenda off this evening with water consumption challenges. We've heard wastewater challenges. We all know the challenges that exist in the summertime with transportation. So the local comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is the most important thing. No offense to your strategic plan, but it's the most important thing the community does. And so to that end, we've applied to the One Stop for Growth program back in March for $150,000 to hire a consultant to help us create a new LCP. And the biggest part of that is hearing the input from the community, is engaging with folks to hear what their concerns are. It's not just boards in the room. It's not just folks who attend the meeting, but it's all the community members that, you know, can't make it tonight and who want to voice their opinion about what the future of Falmouth looks like. So it's the most important thing that we can do. And so we're on it.
Good. I want to jump down to the short-term rental advisory. We have two members here that are on the committee, Ms. Harris and Mr. Brown. You want to just give the audience a quick update as to where you guys are on this?
Sure.
And I know Ms. Klein is also in the audience as well.
I think we've made pretty good progress only after a couple of meetings. We're going to meet again on Wednesday here in this room at 6 o'clock. And we heard from Leslie Sandberg, a Province Town Select Board member at our last meeting, and she gave us some real insight into what they found when they actually commissioned the study and they had some professional people looking into what the numbers are. They thought they might have had 1,500 or 2,000. It turns out they had more like 800 after they really figured it out because a lot of ones that had been listed by the state previously were no longer in that use. And they get added to the list when they sign up, but they don't get taken off the list when they change their plans or sell the house or whatever. It just lingers on that list. So the list needs some updating. So that could turn out to be a similar phenomenon here in Falmouth. We don't know yet. This week, we have a lady who is the director of, the director of health, what was it exactly? Do you remember her title?
I think it is health.
Yeah, director of the health department. And she's coming from Plymouth to explain how they've been using the short-term rental in Plymouth. And they've been pleasantly surprised that it hasn't been a really big workload. They have a four-person health department as well. Plymouth's a much bigger town. So we're looking forward to hearing what she has to say about it. Charlotte put together a side-by-side comparison of the existing draft that we crafted last year with the working group that Ms. Attorney O'Keefe put together. And we found that that's a durable bylaw, but yet we felt like other towns had done some other things that we were interested. So we're adding potentially, we'll see what people think on Wednesday, but we're potentially proposing to add some language around the definitions and the enabling legal authority to implement the bylaw and so forth. So I think we're making pretty good progress. Charlotte, what did I miss?
Nothing.
One other item that Mr. Druley wanted us to discuss, so John, why don't we, third-party monitoring?
Sure, thank you. So historically, in the town of Falmouth, affordable rental housing was done by Falmouth Housing Corporation, Falmouth Housing Trust, not Falmouth Housing Trust, Falmouth Housing Corporation.
And the Housing Trust.
Yes, and yeah, right, Housing Trust. So they were nonprofits, and there was no need to have to monitor the situation. But we've approved and building a fair amount of affordable rental housing now. We have 104 apartments on Main Street. I think 26 of them are going to be affordable. We have 15 more going up across from the diner. If a gentleman builds out in the Sandwich, it's going to be Sandwich Road, there's going to be 300. So that would be, what, 75 more affordable units? Mr. DeSangre did 20 units over on Brick Hill Road. So my concern is the bedding of the affordable people that are going to live there. First of all, the income bedding and also the ongoing bedding as apartments turn over. How are we going to know that they're being used the way they were permitted to be used by the people that should be living there? So I don't know what the process is going to be. It's going to be, I think, a pretty good-sized task for someone and probably more than one person can do. Kim's doing a lot of jobs right now, so. So something I want to make your board aware of because it is going to be important. It's not just the original bedding, but the ongoing.
Keeping it.
As apartments turn over. I know, I think there's some agencies that will do some of this, but I've heard that sometimes they're not as good as they appear to be.
Something we need to look at.
Yeah, absolutely. I wonder how many of the agencies are no longer even actually, you know, in place? I wonder if that's a possibility that?
Well, I've heard that Housing Assistant Corporation, they were doing it, but a year or two ago, they stopped doing it. I think they were the major ones on Cape Cod, but so I really don't know what the answer is.
And I also know that in the past, Falmouth Housing Trust has served as a monitor for some other projects. I don't know if that's still the case, but you're right, we should know more.
It'll be an ongoing job.
We're talking an awful lot of apartments that need to be monitored.
Probably around 100 new apartments. And the right people should be living there. That's, you know, we're trying to solve a problem here and we're building. And before, we started having some incentives for for-profit developers to do apartments, affordable apartments. And, you know, they've received some money upfront to help them make them affordable. And not every one of these projects are like that. But because of the stimulus, we are now getting for-profit developers building affordable housing. And I think they need to be monitored.
Does anybody have any ideas how that would happen?
Something we need to look at. Do you have a thought on this?
I do.
Okay, please.
So as you may know, the Barnstable Counties, back in 2023, established the Shared Regional Housing Services Office. Part of that initial effort was to help communities understand affordable housing, some of the rules, et cetera. Well, they've opened that up, and the Select Board, as trustees of the Affordable Housing Fund, authorized the use of approximately $26,000 to buy into that program for exactly that purpose, to have their consultant that they contract with help the town not only track the affordable housing developments, all of the deed restrictions, but then also help with the monitoring. So we have a plan in place to manage that. Because as Mr. Druley mentioned, it's a big job for one person to take on. And Kim's great, but it's a lot of work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I may, I just wanted to, and I think Mr. Druley and the planning board are aware of this, but just for the public, just zooming out, big picture, to know that there is a requirement for all of our deed-restricted units, that there be a monitoring agreement with a monitor. So all of the new housing that we have generated in the last 10 years or so, well, at least within the last eight years, we have required not the town, that third-party monitor not be the town and not a state agency. So that leaves a lot of the older units still vulnerable. And everything that Jed said, you know, addresses a lot of this, these existing units that may not have a credible existing monitor. On paper, there's always a monitor, whether it's an agency or a private entity. But I think we all feel much more confident about all of the new housing that we've created and how those are being monitored.
I think Mr. Druley's point is that we need to oversee those monitoring agencies to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, yeah. Well, I think we're at the end of that particular agenda, and I just want to say that this has been a wonderful process. We appreciate your being here. It's something that the town code requires that we meet with you. And this has been the way I think these types of meetings should be, real collaboration and interaction. And appreciate your time tonight. So thank you.
Thank you for the invitation and for the patience, and we are enjoying.
Okay, well, wait a moment while our esteemed members of the planning board depart. Close to being on time here. Okay, so our next matter will be our business matter, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee Report and Discussion. Mr. Johnson Staub is teeing up their presentation. Please introduce yourselves and?
Without our props?
You can do it, Jim.
People play music before, you can just play music.
Okay. Might as well not waste time, right?
Just going to invite any of the people that are out there in the hallway to please step in and take a seat, if you don't mind. Plenty of seats.
Sure, yeah.
Should we start then?
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. There's a PowerPoint presentation. Good evening. My name is Manazoo Janassan. I'm the chair of the Town of Falmouth Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee. I am joined tonight by the secretary of the committee, Jim Newman. Mr. Chair, board members, thank you for having us tonight to present the annual report to the Select Board of June, end of June 2024 to end of June 2025. So, well, the assistant manager is getting us set up, thank you. A quick overview of the diversity committee. The DIB committee serves as an advisory body to the Select Board, focusing on institutional. Do you want me to wait? Okay. Focusing on institutional and committee challenges, emerging national issues, and forging collaborative relationships with organizations and residents. From end of June 2024 to end of June 2025, here are the members. Myself, Manazoo Janassan as a chair, Melanie Kioato, who joined us tonight as a vice chair, Dr. Amy Bauer, a research scientist, Hui. And may I just say, Melanie is the licensed social worker now at the Farm of Human Services, also serving the Brazilian community. We had Gina Map, which term ended in June 2025. Very, very well-spoken advocate of the DIB cause. And Jim Newman here joined us in spring 2025. Jim is very involved in town in all things justice and immigration and retired, so has more time than us to work on this. And we also have the liaisons. Heather Goldstone is on the board, extremely involved, too, we appreciate it. Susan Lumpen here as well, director of the Human Resources of Town of Falmouth. Henry San Julian, director of the DIB from the Farm of Public School. Chris Lumpen from the school committee. And Chloe Bridges, who was our student liaison until she graduated this year. And Chris Lumpen is now, the new liaison for the school committee is now Mike Helen. So that's our members. The past year, we had, sorry, the past year, we held 10 meetings with August and January, not organized because of various conflicts. And the first order of the committee back in July was to have everyone take the open meeting law training since we are all fairly new and also fairly new in town government. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, so that's where we are. It's Melanie. That's, that was one of our workshops on understanding unconscious bias. Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. So after we got trained in open meeting law, which, by the way, we use the Office of the Attorney General, Massachusetts Attorney General, it's a webinar that they offer, and everyone had to, went on the training on their own time and all certified over it. In the report that you have, we have the attendance record from all the members and the liaisons. What were our major accomplishments the past year? Just a slight reminder that this report ended on 30th of June 2025, so it doesn't include any of the activities that was from July on. But happy to take questions on that later. So the main thing that we did was the renaming, renaming the committee from Affirmative Action to the DIB Committee to reflect a more modern value. And with that, also a new mission and vision statement. Another, we organized several workshops, not workshops, guest speakers. And here, in July, we had Mr. Jack Dillon for the unconscious bias training. In October 2024, we had Max Jenz for the workforce, housing, and DEI in employment. He represented the Town of Falmouth Workforce Sustainability Task Force. Falmouth Workforce Sustainability Task Force. In November, we had Ms. Rachel Glisper, here in a picture, to give us a townwide DEI employee survey results. In December, we had Joe Pacheco, Director of the Barnstable County Human Services, to talk about the Network of Care, which is a resource hub for all of Cape Cod. In March, we had a site visit to the Falmouth Service Center with Ms. Karen Delany, and the presentation to follow from that. And in April, we had Jay Huber, a spokesman for Michael Messenas, who is the founder of the Brazilian Resource Centers. They talk about the immigration and low-income family services for the Brazilian community. So, those are the main activities we did, and also we worked with the Juntif Proclamation Committee, and we also recruited Jim, who is going to take over for the next slide.
So, sorry, I feel a little off balance. The, this, this slide talks about how in, things have changed in the last year, as everybody is very much aware. We found that our priorities were shifting in response to national events, the efforts to dismantle DEI programs, increased crackdowns, and so on. So, we've, we've drafted a formal statement to the Select Board reaffirming the town's commitment to DEI, and we're very appreciative that the, the Select Board approved that statement. We are proposing community listening sessions. Those are, that's a work in progress to bring people in and share lived experience. And we're monitoring policy changes that might impact residents and local families, more on the, more on the state and federal levels than on the town level, happily. Looking forward, we plan to resume working on our strategic goals, make a priority of community engagement, and, and to try to expand our resources and connections. The, the most impressive thing that's happened since I've been on the board, which actually comes after the period of this report, was a presentation we had in August where Susan Lumping in Human Resources brought in herself, of course, but, but three other directors of town departments to talk about the initiatives that various town departments were taking to promote diversity in the, in the, in town government. And it was a phenomenal, it was a phenomenal presentation. I, I, I can't say enough about the efforts that are going on within this town government to, to make sure that, that we do promote these values. I think that's, that's it, yeah. But we want to, do want to thank the Select Board for their support, and we have some wonderful community partners. I'm not going to try to go through them all. And, and we get a lot of, of great support and, and want to express our appreciation for the town staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, Ms. Goldstone?
I have one question in terms of the revisiting and building on strategic goals. What's the process that you're envisioning for, for developing those?
So, mostly, those were leftovers from last year before, we were a small committee that no one talked about before this year, and suddenly our priorities have changed dramatically. So, we had to adjust, and now we are going back to those, kind of like getting back us on trail on top of, in addition to addressing challenges. So, those would be accessibility of town websites. We're talking about for low and, low and impaired vision. People, we're talking about transportation issues, making sure that people have access to public transportation. One issue was, for instance, like when they go voting. We really want to reach out to the youth of being part of this. We want to reach out to a whole range of people, to the, we want to work with the senior center. So, yeah, we want to go back to what was planned before. Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Reed.
I have a, and perhaps a tough question for both of you, which is, I appreciate the word belonging. That's at the heart of everything, of creating a really solid and loving community that we have. In a scale of one to 10, one being very low and 10 being the best ever, where do you think we are as Falmouth, holistically, as a community in which people feel, you know, a sense of belonging?
Can I answer that?
Go ahead.
I am more than happy to answer that. I can tell you that I'm going to throw out my very formal thing and put on my face. I used to be a runner when I came here about 15, 18 years ago, and this woman took her dog and crossed the street and would not run next to me. I'm standing here now. This is a proof that how much we have progressed, how much the town has made effort, and every single one of us. And I just talked to Jim about, I'm sorry, I'm going to name drop you, Paula, but Paula and I get really, really good work together, and she's at the Veterans Center. This is what it's all about. We all work together, no matter what our beliefs are.
Thank you.
To hear. Yes, Mr. Richardson.
On the topic of DEI, just think I'd, figured I'd ask. I know it came up in the enterprise last month from one of your committee meetings. Do we have an update on the DEI officer post?
So, Mr. Chair and Select Board Member Richardson, at this stage right now, we just had a conversation, Peter and I, with the HR Director. We're continuing down the path that we talked about, I think the last update we gave, we're providing. We're attempting to locate some additional consultants that we can bring in with specialized skills. We see that as kind of a, a good way to develop a foundation of awareness. The survey was conducted that Mananzu mentioned was not the best survey. I'm just going to say that tonight, but it provided some data. I want to build on that going forward. And I'll say this tonight, ultimately, it's my goal, and there's going to be some more discussions at the staff level. Ultimately, it's my goal to fill that position with, now, a discussion may be whether or not that position is a full-time versus perhaps a part-time, but I want somebody in, in the position to manage processes. I'm not an expert in, in, in DEIB, I'm not, but I see the value in it. And so, that's going to be our goal moving forward, is to look for a person that's that, that good fit for the organization. Right now, though, I think the best path is to, is to explore, and Peter, the Assistant Town Manager has done a great job getting some additional consultant resources. So, we're going to continue to do that and line up some, some folks that can come in. Jack Dolan, Attorney Jack Dolan was mentioned, gave a presentation, I believe, several months ago to the DEIB Committee. We're looking at bringing Jack in at the staff level to provide some of that same training.
Thank, thank you very much for that, and I, and I appreciate how you have supplemented in the meantime and not just now we're looking. So, I appreciate, I can really see the commitment that you and, and town staff have made. So, thank you very much for that.
Could I just ask a follow-up on that? Are you, is the interim use of the consultant a way to build the infrastructure, to provide the setting for the, the position, or?
So, when I say lay a good, that's a great question, Mr. Chair and Select Board Member Rounden. So, by laying a foundation, we want, we all want the, the, the DEIB position, the officer, to be successful. I think coming into a new organization, it's a challenge, even if we find somebody, not if, when we find somebody with exceptional skill sets. I think having a proper foundation laid and having, identifying where the gaps are in knowledge and awareness was the big first step. And again, I mentioned the survey that was done several months ago. There were gaps, unfortunately, in that survey that I think we can fill, but I think it gave us some good information, some good starting points as far as where we need to focus our efforts. And again, increasing awareness, educating the staff, and, in terms of the importance. We, as you all know, the Select Board adopted the, the core values, and we really put a focus, working at the department level, on developing those core values and recognizing the importance of, of DEIB in our community and in, in the organization. So, I think laying the proper, strong foundation is going to make the DEIB officer position, once it's filled, more successful.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for all the work you're, you're doing. I mean, in, in face of these headwinds that are national, you guys have stepped out and really shown the importance of DEIB, and we appreciate all your work. So, thank you. All right. Okay, so, within this particular item, we also want to discuss the cultural respect easements, and Dr. Gladfelter is, is prepared to do so. You know, I'm just going to mention, as a suggestion from Member Reed, as we develop our agendas going forward, we're going to try to be somewhat more thematic in, in setting our agendas going forward, and this is the first example of our being able to do that as we feel what Dr. Gladfelter is going to speak about and what Dr. Fame and Silver is going to speak about after fit well within the, the, the context of DEIB. So, going forward, and appreciate Mr. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson Staub addressing that and, and setting the agenda along with Vice Chair Goldstone and myself. So, we'll see more of this, this type of thematic agenda setting going forward. Thanks to Mr. Reed. Thank you. Okay, not that you need any introduction, but please introduce yourself.
Thanks. My name's Betsy Gladfelter. Actually, I'm not on any committee right now, but I'm a project manager for Kunemesset River Restoration Projects, and these ideas evolved because one of our partners on those projects is the Mashby Wampanoag Tribe, which we've been working very closely with, and have, have done a number of things. And now, this is, for about two years, we've been discussing cultural respect easements, but I always have to kind of prioritize what I can get done at a certain amount of time, and now it's time to shift to this. And Kat, who's from the Garofoli?
Compact.
Garofoli, from the Compact of, is here, and she's worked on these, too. So, let me just start with, Town of Falmouth and the 300 Committee are in the exploration phase of granting cultural respect easement on their respective land holdings along the Kunemesset Greenway. And the Town of Falmouth has approximately 250 conservation acres, and the 300 Committee about a tenth that. So, so that's what the Greenway is. And about half of the town lands are wetlands and are, have been or are almost finished with restoration activities. Okay, the Lower Kunemesset was finished in 2020. The Upper Kunemesset, the area where the purple circle is, is almost finished. So, the tribe's been an active partner in these restoration projects since 2010, but I'm sure most of you are aware of the fact that the Mashby Wampanoag, or the Wampanoags have been living in these lands for many, many thousands of years. So, what's a cultural respect easement? It's a legal agreement that guarantees indigenous people cultural aspect, access to land in perpetuity. There's a long history of indigenous people having to assimilate to European cultural and religious practices. Indigenous people have a traditional knowledge of the land that embraces all living things upon it and encourages healthy biodiversity. There is a single cultural rights easement on the Cape, and I think you were involved with that Cape, and it's between the Dennis Conservation Land Trust and the Native Land Consortium. I have trust here, but it's a consortium. So, it's, it's a little bit of a philosophical difference. I talked to, to Peter and Mike probably almost two years ago.
Two years.
It has been.
Believe it or not. And I said, I have some ideas, and I said, it's, it's a little bit, not sort of a traditional way that we might think of it, but it's, it's living with nature. And one of the other, so this was one of the ideas. The other was rights of nature, which, of course, we did bring to the board, and it was passed. So, with the idea that, we don't usually think in these terms, but we're part of nature, and anybody looks at the, at the storms and the fires that are happening, you realize that you can mitigate some of these issues to protect sort of property areas, but, but you don't change it. And so, it's living in harmony with nature. Now, the first rights of nature movement, first rights of nature on the Cape was the Native Environmental Ambassadors of, of the Mashby Wampanoags. And this was an idea we worked with a couple of tribal members and some other people in town to develop the, the Falmouth Rights of Nature. And I'm hoping to have all the Fa-, all the, all the Cape towns embrace of, of rights of nature. Okay, so what is, what is this, what does it mean? Well, at the various, at the very minimum, a cultural respect easement is saying, we respect the fact that you've lived in these lands for thousands of years and consider that we're part of nature. And so, but there's certain aspects of cultural aspects that can be included. And I, I'm not saying any one of these will or won't be included. That's part of the process that we're going through now. But community gatherings, traditional spiritual and religious ceremonies, medicinal, medicinal plant and herb harvest, seasonal celebrations, cultural education and interpretation, sustainable fishing and clamming, and sustainable plant harvest. And so, one of the things as part of the Kunemesset Greenway Heritage Trail, you know we have interpretive signs, but with, working with our colleagues and working with, what's it? Terracor, Terracor member Grace Fashon, we've developed additional panels, and one of the panels is rights of nature, celebrating the fact that the Herring students was, was the first, and then the, the fact that Falmouth has, has a rights of nature. We also have, and this will be at the overlook, the history of the Wampanoag Nation, the plant use and animal use, and this rights of nature will be in the upper area, that unfortunately most of you won't see it. You'll both, you'll both be there, right?
Yes, we will.
Okay, and, and you'll be there, and I have, I'm not going to talk to you. You have an important role.
I roll, I know.
You do.
Do you have a plug for that event that you want to mention?
Pardon me?
Do you have a plug for that event that you want to mention?
Um, sure. We're going to have the opening ceremony a week from tomorrow, but parking is extremely limited. So, and I'd love to have you come, but please carpool. And the Jewish congregation has been very kind to allow us to park there, and so there'd be a shuttle from there to the site. But sure, I'd love to have people come. And you're, you all aren't coming, but you'll be there, and you'll be there.
Just for the record, we, we, we do have a reason that we won't be there.
Yeah, they have, they have an excuse.
But Jack always shows up.
We have one cape. I would love to be there, but...
I'll walk that trail anyway. I'll walk the trail anyway.
All right. So, we already work with these, so these are two pictures that are, that are, where cultural aspect, ask, access regularly takes place, but having a cultural respect easement formalizes the agreement. But here's Chief Mills and Mark Caspersek gathering witch hazel, which is a tradition, which is a plant that's used for medicinal units, uses. And Chief Mills has a, has a garden in Mashby that where, so he can, so people can learn what these plants are and then go out and see them in the environment. And the person in the, in the bottom left corner in the, in the left picture is Jason Stedding. He's, he's a natural... a natural resource officer. And this is the day he brought his camp group to the Kuna Mesut. We talked about the restoration process in the Lower River, and then they went canoeing, although unfortunately, it was a very rainy day. Although, it was probably the last rainy day since before yesterday. So here's what the process would be. The Town of, what we're thinking about, Town of Falmouth would grant a cultural respect easement to the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, that's municipality to tribal government. And the 300 Committee would grant a cultural respect easement to the Native Land Conservancy, land trust to land trust, for their respective areas along the Greenway. So the stakeholders are the 300 Committee, the Town of Falmouth, and within the 300 Committee have their own process. Within the Town of Falmouth, it would have to be presented to the Conservation Commission, who manages these conservation lands. They would then present it to you, and then, and then, I'm not sure, then we're going to have to go to you and figure out.
I'm hoping that you come to me at some point.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I hope, I would hope you go to her before.
Here, even before it goes, when a document is produced, it would go to you before it went to the Conservation Commission.
You need to include me a lot earlier than that.
Like now.
Well, that's part of it, and I'm more than happy to sit and talk with you, and Kat will come with me because she knows a lot more about it than I do.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So the Native Land Conservancy, the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, the Compact, and as a first step, we have a field trip scheduled at the end of the month to visit the sites. Because how do we know what the cultural aspects would, access points would be until we have a site visit? And then we'll begin discussions.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Any questions from any of the members?
Just, I think it's an interesting concept, and I like it. I just, I think the Wampanoags have the right to traverse any of these lands and fish.
Well, they do. I mean, they're, they do like we do.
Right.
But it's formally agree, formally.
A recognition.
Recognizing, right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm thrilled that you're pursuing this and that we're having the discussion, and I hope that this process with the Kuna Mesut Greenway can perhaps be an opening to a broader conversation for more areas in town as well. I think it's really, really promising. So thank you for the groundwork that you've laid so far.
Thanks.
Just a question from Ms. Garofoli. Are any other towns other than Dennis entertaining the concept of these CREs?
Thank you, Chair Ms. Gally. Kat Garofoli, I work for the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts, paired with the 300 Committee, two days a week to help them with land initiatives. So the answer is yes. There are a lot of different land trusts, Cape Cod communities that are very interested in pursuing a cultural respect easement within their communities. Currently, within the land trust community, we are starting on the journey of what's called a first light collective, where we are bringing together Indigenous tribal members, as well as land trust boards and other community members to come in and learn about the different resources out there to help acknowledge, respect, and re-center our idea about land conservation. And so right now, we're in the very starting phases of moving forward with a strategic plan on how we can be most effective in providing information to people, how we can support these land trusts in pairing with the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe and beyond, because we also have the Herring Pond Mashpee-Wampanoag, or Wampanoag Tribes, as well as the Aquina. And so, right now, there is a collective effort to move this forward. And I think that the Dennis Conservation Land Trust did a great job setting the stage, but in reference, it's been a very slow process. Dennis Conservation Land Trust, at the time I was their executive director, we put the cultural respect easement in place in 2016. There has not been one since. I think it's just a concept that people need to learn more about, and it's truly at the speed of trust in this process.
Thank you. We appreciate Dr. Gladfelter bringing this idea to us, so thank you. If there's no other questions, then we will move on to discuss initiatives and programs to build meaningful and lasting relationships with the Wampanoag Tribe. And I think Dr. Famon Silva, am I correct? Mr. Renshaw, do you have any comments?
As Dr. Famon Silva's working her way to the podium, I do have a comment. I had the opportunity, the privilege really, back in April of this year, to sit down with Dr. Famon Silva. It was with then Chair Taylor. Had a discussion, a very productive discussion, with regards to what was being described as a land acknowledgement initiative. What we'd like to discuss tonight, and I don't know if Dr. Famon Silva has a presentation or not, as the title suggests, some initiatives and programs, how we can go out into the community and outreach and educate the community, and teach folks about the important contributions and the legacy of the Wampanoag Tribe.
Thank you very much. I'm Sandy Famon Silva, I've lived in Falmouth since 1984. I'm a professor emerita of anthropology. I taught at Bridgewater State University for more than 30 years, and left my legacy there, teaching many new courses, developing many new programs. One of my areas of special expertise is Indigenous, Native North America and Latin America. So I have taught courses in this area as well. Now, I do have about eight copies of this proposal that I'll be talking about. If you want to fight over them, or just share them, be my guest. Thank you. And I, this land acknowledgement issue has a long history in our town. And the relationship with Indigenous people also has a long history in our town. But Falmouth has taken significant steps to acknowledge Indigenous people in our community. We passed the Indigenous Peoples' Day Town Meeting Article in 2021, which I submitted to Town Meeting, and it did pass. Also, Falmouth voted to change our state flag, seal, and motto through a Town Meeting Article that I submitted also in, I believe about 19, 2021. And I also, and the state flag and motto, the flag, if you open it up, we can see the misogynist racist images on that, and it is being changed. New drawings are, have already been collected, and the Commonwealth of Mass is pursuing, deciding on which new rendition of our state flag is going to be formally officially adopted. The Falmouth land acknowledgement was first proposed at Falmouth Town Meeting in November of 2020, when I submitted an article at Town Meeting, and unfortunately, that one didn't pass. Why do we begin talking about this conversation with a land acknowledgement? And I think the previous presentation is really a good stepping stone from there to here. Land acknowledgements are vehicles for us to reckon with our past. That's why they are fundamental to any meaningful engagement with our Indigenous neighbors, colleagues, and friends. Out of reckoning with or acknowledging our sometimes painful and troubling past comes important knowledge, messages, lessons, teachings, and consciousness raising. Now, this is not a legal entity, the land acknowledgement. It doesn't, it's not like what we just described, what was just described for us, where the Town of Falmouth is going to enter into an easement and permit access to land. And Indigenous tribes, particularly in the United States, who are federally recognized, have rights, inherent rights, through their federal recognition relationship with the federal government, to access to customary and traditional hunting, fishing, gathering, and other areas. So we all, Indigenous people already have inherent rights that cannot be undermined. What is a land acknowledgement? And the purpose of a land acknowledgement, as I mentioned in my, in my written document, is to demonstrate recognition and respect for Indigenous people in our community and region, both in the past and present, and the contributions they have made to our communities and our nation. The land acknowledgement should be shared to enhance cultural sensitivity and historical understandings. We're not, we're not providing a service, we're not, you know, bartering something, we're simply conveying knowledge and wisdom through a land acknowledgement. It's an intangible. And in order to be meaningful and enduring, adopting a land acknowledgement should also include ongoing educational outreach and community engagement. So again, a land acknowledgement, and I did, there is one written as part of this proposal, is really, again, sort of the bedrock of our relationship with Indigenous people in our region and in our nation. It acknowledges the history that we share, a history that's very painful and very troubling, but it has to be remembered. We have to bear witness to the history that we had, just as people who experienced the Holocaust have to keep that knowledge alive lest we repeat it in future generations. And we are facing a very dangerous time in our country today because of this crisis. So again, one way for our community to embrace a relationship with our Indigenous neighbors and friends is to broaden our activities, not just to reading or narrating a land acknowledgement statement at a meeting or at a particular event in town, but it's to really develop a whole range of activities that we can undertake in partnership with our neighbors and friends who are Indigenous, but also with the community as a whole. And these include ways to share and to enhance our cultural sensitivity and historical understandings of our Indigenous neighbors. So adopting, we, I propose that we adopt a land acknowledgement, but at the same time, we develop ongoing educational outreach and community activities. I request that the town partner with community members to create, host, or sponsor programs, develop informational materials and public displays, just as what is being suggested at the Kuna Mesut River Sites, narrative displays that will describe what people are seeing, and what ways did Indigenous people use the land to sustain themselves, to subsist. And we could develop these materials, public displays, and build enduring relationships. And these will include educational, social, and civic programs, public signs, displays, and informational pamphlets, building and maintaining lasting partnership with Wampanoag tribal members, either through annual meetings or quarterly meetings with the tribal council, for example, and the select board could have meetings periodically so that we get to know each other much better and share information and our expertise. And also, we need to secure funding to support these events. We're actually, some, a group in Falmouth has, for the second year, is organizing an Indigenous Peoples' Day event for, it's going to be held on October 12th here in Falmouth, but we have no funding. So we did ask the town, if you could provide some funding for this year, and I hope that the paperwork has gone through and that we will be getting some funding to provide honoraria for our guest speakers. And we also suggest that the town consider forming a working group to implement meaningful and enduring educational events, programs, and opportunities for community engagement. And this is where a DEIB person who's here, hired formally to do a job, would really be helpful, because that person could be a paid employee who, whose job description would allow for that person to help develop really high-quality programs. I'm a ranking amateur, but I did it for 30 years at Bridgewater, so we will have an event, and I hope it's going to be a good one. But again, these are a variety of suggestions. Funding can also be secured through grants, donations, and, as I mentioned, the Town of Falmouth budget. Events and programs may be developed in coordination with existing town organizations, committees, and agencies, such as the Falmouth Cultural Council, Falmouth Public Library, Highfield Hall, Falmouth Historical Society, and the Falmouth DEIB Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee, and the Mashpee-Wampanoag, and as I mentioned, the DEIB officer. Hopefully, we'll get one. Funding for lasting and enduring events, observances, and activities, and signage, all would relate to the Indigenous communities around us. There is not just one Mashpee-Wampanoag, there's not just one Wampanoag tribe, actually, there are three tribes in our region, and we should be engaging with all of them. We request that the Town of Falmouth establish a permanent fund to support annual and periodic events, observances, and activities, to promote lasting fellowship and engagement with Wampanoag and other Indigenous peoples and communities in our region. Funds from an, and I would call it, an Indigenous Peoples' Engagement Fund would support costs associated with annual Indigenous Peoples' Day observances, other educational and community activities, posting of appropriate signage, other expenses for speakers, performers, and other community engagement events and activities. So we request the Select Board establish a budget line item, and I'm asking for 5,000, annually, to be authorized to pay our expenses, and it doesn't have to be paid annually, we could add a little sludge fund here for future lean years. So this is my vision, and I hope that some of it will be put into operation. And I'm really hoping that we begin again with the land acknowledgement, because as was mentioned, you know, Indigenous people were custodians of Mother Earth for so many generations, and took such wonderful care of Mother Earth, and have taught us so many crucially important ways of being, respectful to not only the land, but all of the inhabitants of Mother Earth, and nature itself, and even the rocks and minerals, and all of the aspects of our environment that are so important for a lasting, sustainable future. And we can learn a lot, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all agree that, you know, a proclamation is certainly important, but the programs, engagement of the community is just as important, and it's not just empty words. So I think you've laid out a number of very good suggestions that we need to take into consideration as we go forward. Anyone have any comments? Mr. Richardson?
This is a question, I think, for Town Council and for, I guess, everyone, but what is the process of us developing and going for a land acknowledgement? Because Plymouth just went through that process, and quite frankly, it was disrespectful what the Town of Plymouth came to. And I think it is important we pursue a land acknowledgement, and I just want to make sure we do whatever is necessary to get there.
I have concerns about how a land acknowledgement might impact the town's property rights and its, and town properties. And I'm very mindful that as Town Council, I have to be really cautious and deliberate in, in my legal opinion here. This legal opinion really is solely contained to the matter of property rights. It does not speak to the merits of this agenda item, and I wholeheartedly agree that the town should pursue, to the fullest extent, engagement and outreach in order to foster a better relationship with the Wampanoag Tribe, but I don't support, from a legal perspective, purely from property rights, a land acknowledgement.
Okay. Then I guess I'll redirect my question to Town Manager. Then I, I guess I'll redirect my question to town manager, so, and select board chair. So if we did want to, and thank you for your legal opinion, I appreciate that, but if we still wanted to pursue it, what is the action that we would undergo to do this?
My, my concern with this issue from, from the very beginning has always been that the matter was presented to town meeting, and town meeting made a determination, and personally, I'm a little hesitant to have this board move forward in, in opposition, if you will, to what, what town meeting already had, had, had determined. That being said, you know, things change, circumstances change, but that's my initial reaction, Mr. Richardson.
May I speak to this issue?
Certainly.
I actually did consult with an attorney who has worked in, as the attorney for towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the opinion of this individual was that, first of all, with respect to the, the not preempting a town meeting decision, that these are done all the time, that this is, this is not, there is no legal basis for the select board to feel that you cannot revisit an issue that was raised at town meeting.
I never said it was a legal issue. I was just saying what my opinion was. And we'll take, we'll take our advice from, from, from our town council going forward, but I understand, you know, your position.
And also, the, well, with respect to the land acknowledgement, unlike the easement discussion that was, that you had before, there is no tangible demand that a, a verbal acknowledgement of events in history can be legally adjudicated so that people could use that as a basis for trying to get ownership of land in our country. There is just no tangible, you know, exchange of property that a land acknowledgement, and maybe I should read the land acknowledgement that, that is at issue here.
Well, I don't, I don't think there's anything before the board, so I don't think, you know, I, I don't think we need to read it at this point.
The only, the only thing I then, I would add, Mr. Chair, because the way this agenda item is proposed is just as a discussion, but I, I'm just saying this for the matter of the record, I think we should put this again as a future agenda item to seriously discuss this.
Certainly discuss it as a future agenda item. Sure. Okay. Anyone else?
I, I agree that it, it does warrant further discussion, but in the meantime, we also have some near-term opportunities and it sounds like potentially needs. And, and you've said, Mr. Chair, that, that you believe a proclamation is, is warranted, and I agree, and I would like to, to work on that for Indigenous Peoples' Day, to ensure that we do have a strong endorsement from the town for, for the event and for the acknowledgement that Indigenous Peoples' Day represents of both the, the difficult history and also the enduring importance of, of the Wampanoag members of our community. So I'd, I'd like to work on that and also ensure that, that that event is a robust event, and, and Dr. Famon Silva, you mentioned needs for that, that event, and so I'd like to understand where, where we stand with the, the plans for an Indigenous Peoples' Day event or recognition and what is needed there.
I did submit, the DEIB committee was going to be sending Mr. Renshaw my budget, the budget, which I think was sent, but I'm not sure.
Yes.
So I had asked to have it confirmed that the budget was about eleven, about $1,000.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair Goldstone, the DEIB Advisory Committee Chair did submit some numbers, and at my request, I asked Dr. Famon Silva to work with the DEIB Advisory Committee. My analogy was the recent use of some select board donation fund accounts to support some of the 250th Anniversary Task Force. As I explained to Dr. Famon Silva when we first met about this, I felt that the, whatever balance was left in that donations account, and those truly are, I think, the only funds that would be applicable, are, are limited. So we're not likely going to be able to meet the $1,000, whatever that final proposed budget request was, but that will be a request, a future agenda item, in, in preparation for the October 12th event, that we bring that request to utilize whatever remaining funds are towards, to offset some of the costs. We're not going to be able, there's not $1,000 left in that account, Dr. Famon Silva.
Okay. I don't, I have no idea what we're talking about.
So the budget was submitted, it's under review, and we'll bring that back to the next select board meeting for select board consideration to utilize some of those remaining funds for the, for that purpose.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next matter is the report of the Veterans Council, and we have it slated for 15 minutes. If we can compress that a little bit, it's a long agenda, we still have to go. But we certainly want, we, we certainly want to hear everything you have to say, however.
We just went a lot longer than that on something that wasn't even on your agenda.
No, I don't have anything. I'm just going to speak.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah, no. Well, my name is Paula Smith, and, oh, dear. So my name is Paula Smith, and I am a member of the Town of Falmouth Veterans Council. Our chairperson, Clarissa April, has a conflicting schedule tonight, so I am standing in for her, if, if I could even halfway replace her. But, select board chair and select board members, town manager, assistant town manager, thank you very much for allowing me to brief this evening on behalf of the Falmouth Veteran Council. So just before I, I start with the annual report highlights, I just wanted to reiterate the mission for the, the Town of Falmouth Veteran Council. It is to represent the Town of Falmouth in supporting our veterans by providing awareness, resourcing, and collaboration that enables successful, oh, you missed it.
Sorry.
That enables successful outcomes for our community's veteran activities. And that's a big mouthful, but it keeps us very busy. So in this, in this past year, the committee met monthly, except during their summer recess months of June, July, and August. We did have a lot of productive meetings, two annual public veterans ceremonies that I'm sure everybody's aware of. They were very well attended, right here on the library lawn, the Veterans Day Ceremony and the Memorial Day Ceremony. Of particular note, the laying of the wreath ceremony in, at Falmouth Harbor on Memorial Day was not held this year because the U.S. Coast Guard was not able to participate. So one of the initiatives for this coming year for our committee is to kind of work over the summer, excuse me, as I was, the winter months, with those stakeholders for the event, to assess the needs, and then moving forward with other plans, or the same plans for holding the wreath ceremony for, for next year in 2026. And then also, as far as the Memorial Day and the Veterans Day ceremonies go, you know, it's, it's, it's always on our shoulders to come up with these stellar speakers, be it public knowledge that, that we are all ears, if anybody has any recommendations for speakers for either the Veterans Day or the Memorial Day event, and, you know, we'll, we'll put those folks through the wringer, make sure that we've got a, a real winner to, to do the speaking. We haven't been, we haven't been let down yet, so that's, it's good. During the year, also, committee members supported lots of different events in our communities with partners and other organizations, so just branching out and really working to that collaborative piece. Cape and Island Veteran Outreach Center, there's two people who are part of that organization on our Veterans Council. They held a Veteran Resource Fair, and that was very well attended by hundreds of veterans in Barnstable County, and attended by, you know, myself and, and John Dillon, who is another Veteran Council member. Also, we held the Cape Cod Community College Reboot Light Workshop. That was held at the Falmouth Community Veteran Center. I worked that one and coordinated that, and that took 11 veterans through career transition navigation by bringing in a, a, quite a celebrity who has a national presence from the NVTSI, which is the National Veteran Transition Services, Inc., out of San Diego. And so just to show how, you know, not only our Veteran Council is partnering, but, but our members go out and do as well and bring that, that information back to our council, which is really, really helpful for, you know, enabling the efforts of our veterans for success. This year, the committee considered three new initiatives. They are coins, banners, and discounts. I won't get too much in, into the weeds, but coins are really important in the, in the military culture. They are usually circular metal objects that are given as a, an acknowledgement of a job well done, and also something that improves esprit de corps. Really not expensive little tokens, but boy, to a military veteran person or a supporter, they mean the world. So we are looking at possibly purchasing 500 of these challenge coins to present to, among other people, keynote speakers and other visitors to our town, and for also recognition of contributions of veterans and veteran supporters. In addition, a lot of coins we're thinking about purchasing too, and that's planned for representing to veterans during the 2025 Veterans Day Ceremony. So just a little something added, just a good recognition and, and a, a great way to improve that esprit de corps. Banners, we have been talking with, with town representatives about banners, lots of research is still ongoing into our hopeful proposal later on down the road to install permanent, temporary, or even rotating banners honoring area veterans and their service. And we talked about the locations, the parameters, the costs, and other elements, more to follow. And then also, our, our council is discussing opportunities to honor our veterans by offering veteran discounts for some of our more favorite, our favorite town services. So services such as beach stickers came up and, and some other proposals, so more to follow on that. As far as committee membership goes, our, all of our positions are filled. We're a full house at nine right now, and we had new, one new-at-large member, Brian Kalanin. So that pretty much sums up my report. I'm happy to take any questions. I stand between you and the, and the finale, so I.
We've got a long way to go.
The finale.
Before we get to the finale.
I think I already know this, but can you talk a little bit about how the collaboration between the Veterans Agent and the New Veterans Community Center and the Veterans Council is working?
Sure. Well, it's one team, one fight, right?
Yeah.
So when I say that, I mean that, that in, in, in the spirit of collaboration, remember that any veteran that comes into our community doesn't just go to one person, there isn't just one belly button, right? There is a network that needs to be created in every single community in order to meet the veteran at the line on which they stand. So in that spirit, you know, the Falmouth Veteran Council is very close with the new Falmouth Veteran Center that's opened, to provide activities and navigation and resources to any veteran that comes in, but it doesn't just stop there, right? Because they're always, and I say, when I say they, Falmouth Veterans Center also hosts a lot of activities from other organizations, and I just gave an example of the Reboot Light Workshop that was held. That's based out of Four Seas, right? Cape Cod Community College. And we brought that show down the road here to appeal to, you know, where most of the veterans were living that had signed up. So that was a neat way of line, you know, meeting the veterans at the line on which they stand, but then also bringing new capabilities to this area.
Thank you.
So hopefully that helps.
Do you have an estimate, Ms. Smith, as to how many veterans are here in the Town of Falmouth?
Well, I am sure glad you asked. Yes, I have a couple of numbers committed to memory. Currently, the veterans in Falmouth, this is the actual number that, that would go out on a report, is 2,220. Anecdotally, I would tell you it's probably closer to 3,000, remembering that not everybody is, is reporting, okay? And then you also have to lop on the fact that many of our veteran services, most of our veteran services are offered also to our surviving spouses and caregivers. Let's not forget about that. Remember that every veteran comes with, you know, surround support by people who are invested in the veteran issues as well. So when we talk about our veterans being a little over 2,000, I can tell you that we're serving more like 3,000 plus.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Well, I look forward to joining you. I think I am the liaison, the new liaison, so I will be with you shortly. I do appreciate the commitment to community engagement and public education. I think that's low-hanging fruit. We talked about that earlier at the DEI. Real big question here is, what are the biggest challenges our Falmouth veterans and families and caregivers face? We're heading into our strategic planning sessions over this fall, so what are those big challenges, one, and what do you need this select board's attention on?
Thank you for asking. So I think veterans are, are not exempt from housing issues, okay? Also, food insecurities, okay? Those are, those are two big ones. And then access to, to care. Remembering that many of our veterans receive care from the VA, and your closest VA centers, where you would receive most of your specialty cares, are either in Providence, Rhode Island, or in the Boston area. I myself go from Boston, and if I'm going to Jamaica Plains, it's two hours and 10 minutes. I can't imagine being an 85-year-old veteran trying to get there in, in Jamaica Plains. So transportation to said assets is a huge issue, okay? So I would tell you, those are top three. You know, I don't want to, well, I will. I'll, I'll call on my friend Jim Guzias. Do you have anything else to, to add from, from your foxhole?
Come up to the podium, Jim.
Come on.
Don't be shameful, don't be embarrassed. Come on. You're doing a great job, we all know it.
Jim Guzias, Director of Veterans Services, Town of Falmouth. Yeah, just, just to elaborate what Paula was saying, the predominant issue with the veterans in town, we, we have an older population, and with that older, older, older population, inherently, we have food insecurity, transportation issues in terms of how Paula was stating, getting from their homes here in Falmouth to, let's say, the hospital, the VA Hospital in Providence, or to the community-based outreach clinic in Hyannis. Both of those facilities are, you know, sizable distances for an older population to get to, and we struggle to try to find transportation for that population in terms of what the VA can offer, because the VA operates on eligibility for every program that they have. So they have transportation programs, but not every veteran might be eligible for that program, depending on where they fall within certain statuses with the VA, such as VA ratings and whatnot. So transportation is primarily a huge issue with our older population. One of the other things that I find in town is actual information, okay, knowledge, knowledge about benefits for veterans. That's, that's an ongoing problem across the board, all over the country. What I hear more often than not is, Jesus, if I only knew that, right? So outreach is very important within the veteran community in order to try to access the veterans that need the services. the veterans that need the services the most. And what I mean by that is, the veterans, it's veterans that need the services the most are the ones that at least have the capacity of accessing those services. They don't have the technology, let's say, to, you know, get on a website and navigate the system to find the information like a young vet would. And basically, here on the Cape, the majority of our veterans are over 65 years old. Here in Falmouth, that's more true than anything else. The majority of the volume that I that comes through my office, you know, the average age is probably 68 to 75. Okay? And every single individual, for the most part, struggles with technology. So maybe providing services or additional services to help get over that tech barrier is something that we can all look at, because that's duly needed.
We also hear a lot that veterans are hesitant to ask for help sometimes.
Well, this is, that's true, particularly with a Vietnam-era veteran. And that's where outreach is plays a key role in terms of trying to draw those veterans in. And we try to do that in many different ways. For instance, the Cape and Islands Outreach Center, which is headquartered down in Hyannis, they run a stand-down, a veteran stand-down event every year. This one's coming up in October 17th. And that's designed to draw veterans in based upon service provider, the availability to connect with service providers, also to, you know, they provide free lunch, a free lunch, haircuts for veterans. They give free items out as well. And that's the draw to bring veterans in. But for the most part, it's designed to provide information to the veterans and access to different service providers, such as the VA and local VSOs, as myself, in order to obtain information or even, you know, apply directly to the VA on site, because we have that capability to do that.
Mr. Richardson?
I think one of the things you had asked, what what we can do, too, in Falmouth, and I think one of the greatest things that we can do is realize that there is not a barrier around Falmouth where our veterans cannot go seek assistance in, you know, another town or a region. And that it is it is a great idea to invite others who have the 80% solution to come on down and and service our veterans here in Falmouth. So, you know, to to Jim's point, as far as, you know, the stand-down event in in Hyannis, there's no reason why we need to actually have a stand-down here all the time. You know, it might be a good idea, but maybe to bring those resources down instead of recreating everything for ourselves here in Falmouth. So being able to reach out, but then also bring bring in, I think, is a good idea. And we're all eyes and ears for the veterans in that. So if anybody has any ideas that that the Falmouth Veteran Council can continue to massage and, you know, go out and meet and and hopefully share the ideas, you know, that way we're a force multiplier. We're not, you know, coming up with our own wheel. So, yep.
Yep. Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I thank you both. I mean, you just hit that nail on the head with three things, with communication, transportation, and collaboration. And the regionality, we talked about with housing and wastewater. You know, it's not super well-known, but the Plymouth Area Veteran Center's been open now for for just over, just a little bit under a year. And I think whatever ways we can collaborate in our region, because, you know, the state is potentially looking to build another state-run veterans home. And I think it's crucial, and State Representative Kip Diggs has been pushing with this in Barnstable. I think it's really important we have this here on the Cape. You know, we have a little under 20,000 veterans, something around that on Barnstable County.
On the Cape?
Yeah.
There's 16,000.
And I think it's so important that, you know, whatever, you know, whenever I get a microphone in front of me and, you know, we can push for, you know, all of these issues we talk about, particularly with veterans issues, is so much bigger than just what a Select Board can do. So I think pushing for that regional approach is so important. And yeah, I just, I was just wondering what, big question, but how do you think? Because I've been thinking a lot about how, you know, towns and how the state communicates. How do you think is one way that we can improve our communication with the with the veteran community? And just letting them know, because you're right, everything is so digitized, and that's just not the reality of the majority of the population.
Right. I think because veteran veterans span a lot of different ages, a lot of generations, a lot of, you know, different comfort levels with with technology, I think it's got to be multimodal, I, you know, and that's really what the veteran organizations that are all over the Cape are doing together, so that you know that. I think that's a great thing. So more of what is going on right now. We recognize that not everybody's going to be savvy on a computer. I'm not savvy. I think I'm young at 55. But anyway, you know, so everybody's got different capabilities. Everybody learns differently. And so we are out there with, you know, person to person. We are talking on Zoom. We are calling people. We are inviting people to workshops. We are going to their houses. There's lots of different ways to do this. And again, it's it's being able to continue that pulse to get people to the organizations and their members, to be able to create that network that that gives that invisible hammock under each veteran, so they don't fall through.
Thank you so much.
Okay. One final question, I think, Mr. Brown.
I wonder what what would be the best way to address that transportation gap? Is there any ideas that have been floated? Or I wonder if we had a kind of a fund, Veterans Fund for Mileage, and people could, maybe a volunteer could get reimbursed for the?
That'd be a great thing for the Town Veteran Council to to discuss further. I know Cape and Island Veteran Outreach Center does run its own, in addition to the VA. They have, you know, a robust program as well for for transportation. But the Cape and Island Veteran Outreach Center runs it out of Hyannis, but they cover the entire Cape, bringing people, you know, off Cape. They have a criteria as well. But that would be something that, you know, either they expand, you know, they're already down here, but maybe more so if if, you know, they could double up on the capabilities that Falmouth offers, you know, to get that up and going from Falmouth. You know, something like that would be interesting. But I hope that answers your question. I think it's worth a good discussion, because it's real. There is an awful lot, especially of the older veterans, that do not get the care that they need. Simply, they just can't find a ride.
Okay. Keep an eye on your agenda so we can listen in.
I'd like to just add to that real quick. I think organically, within the town, we could try to look at our senior center to provide some type of community ride program for our seniors, open to all seniors, let's not just say veterans, but specifically, you know, available for our vets to use when they need to get to and from a doctor's appointment.
CCRTA does offer a lot of options, so certainly call upon them for for assistance.
The Plymouth Health and Human Services Department, they do exactly that, where they run it in-house. And I think that, you know, be, reach out to them, and I'm happy to connect.
I'm just thinking more of organically, if they're not town.
Yeah, no, I'm saying that we should copy that. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Very quickly, just a bookmark for a future date. And I, you mentioned the technology issues, and we're working on a digital navigator program. Sounds like.
We'll be, yeah, thank you. We'll be reaching out, because we do have an RFP on the street right now for that digital navigator program. I think I gave it an update not too long ago, but I think it would be perfect to address that digital divide, that kind of knowledge gap with some of the the older veterans.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on our agenda, and as Mr. Renshaw mentioned at the inception of the meeting, we're going to move up to the discussion item G on our agenda. Consider a vote to adopt a revised schedule for November 2025 Annual Town Meeting. And I've asked Mr. Renshaw, Mr. Johnson Staub to talk a little bit about this.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Peter did a great job kind of taking the calendar apart and then rebuilding it, so I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thank you both. So in your packet, we have a proposal to modify the schedule. This was sort of brought on by two things. One, the reconfiguring of the Select Board meeting schedule for the months of September and October, and also a recognition that the the board is looking for as much time as possible to, you know, be able to see see the articles and get community input before voting a recommendation. And I'll come back to that point toward the end. So in your packet is a revised schedule that includes one sort of set of changes. And then in dialogue, just over the last 24 hours between Chairman Mascali and and Mr. Renshaw and myself, we have a further change that we want to propose tonight. So just looking at at what is, starting with what is in the in your packet tonight, you'll see that we had proposed changing the date. And first of all, let me just make very clear, the date of town meeting is not changing, right? So that remains November 17. What we're talking about is how we get there.
And everything's measured off of town meeting and how much time to do certain things?
Right. We work backwards from town meeting. We have several, some bylaw dates, requirements with respect to advertising the newspaper and delivering the warrant book, which has the recommendations from the various boards on every article. And so the initial change that we wanted to talk about was changing the date that the boards, and so again, we're, the boards that print their recommendations for warrant articles include the Select Board, Finance Committee, Planning Board, and the Community Preservation Committee. This particular warrant does not have any Community Preservation articles on it, but you have those other three bodies voting recommendations to be printed in the warrant and advertised in the newspaper. So we are proposing to change the date of voting the recommendations from September 29th through October 3rd, and that's capturing the different days of the week that the boards, various boards meet, to October 8th through the 14th. And then working from there down, we have just enough time, really, to meet our requirements for advertising in the newspaper, which is actually sort of the easier of the two. It's sending the the final warrant book to the printer. They need two weeks. And then those warrant books need to be mailed by the, the statutory obligation is two weeks before town meeting. But we also have, as a practical matter, we want the town meeting members to have their warrant books for the precinct meetings. And this revised calendar that we have before you is is a little tight, but comfortable. It gives the the printer two weeks to print those warrant books, and the town clerk's office sorts them by zip code. And I did review this schedule in detail with the town clerk, and he's he's comfortable that we can send the recommendations to the printer on October 16th, get them back in order for them to be mailed on October, sorry, we're voting, yeah, that's right, October 16th, we send the the recommendations, the full warrant book, including the recommendations to the printer, and then we're mailing the warrant books on October 30th. And then precinct meetings start November 4th, or can start as early as November 4th. So the one additional change that Mr. Mascali asked about is, can we change the date that the Select Board votes the articles and executes the warrant? And after looking at that, we do feel that we could defer that vote to September 29th, because we do have, so the petition articles are set, and those reviews can start right away. The Finance Committee already has the, all of the capital requests, so their review is already underway. We're really not holding that up. So although I don't know that this is sort of the preferred schedule, I think going forward, we would still want more separation between voting the articles and voting the article recommendations. If the board would like to defer voting and executing the warrant from tonight to September 29th, we can make that work as well.
So it's, I don't know if any of the other members have any any thoughts on it. I know that that Vice Chair Goldstone had some questions about moving to vote the articles and execute the warrant this evening. So I think that there should be a motion to adjust the calendar, as as Mr. Johnson Staub has said, which would mean that we would be voting the articles and executing the warrant on September 29th, give the board a little more opportunity to look at some of the articles. It also, we're going to be having a community forum on on Wednesday evening, and the noise bylaw is certainly a matter that would be coming before the town town meeting, so that may be adjusted. So I think personally, I think it's a good good suggestion. We'll proceed with the petition article presentations this evening, as as currently set forth. So is there a motion to amend the November 2025 Annual Town Meeting schedule, as in our packet, as adjusted by Mr. Johnson Staub, which would be Select Board vote articles and execute warrant September 29th, publish articles only October 16, and everything else would remain the same, I think?
I believe it's publish articles only October 4? What's, sorry, what's that? I missed that date.
So.
But that's before we vote the recommendations.
It would be before you vote the recommendations. So it would be immediately following. We would advertise the first Friday following.
October 3rd.
The 29th. So yes.
That's correct. Tuesday's the 29th.
October.
31, two, that's October 2nd. So motion to amend the November 2025 Annual Town Meeting to Select Board vote articles and execute warrant September 29. Petition, sorry, petition article presentations remain tonight, publish articles only October 2nd, and the additional amendments as presented in our packet.
Sorry, it would be, the enterprise publishes on Friday, so it would be October 3rd.
It is October 3rd.
Yep.
I have days of the week wrong.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, I guess it's okay. It's just if we run into any roadblocks while we're voting them, we won't be able to get additional information. We'll have to just vote anyway.
We'll have a little more information going into it, though, I think, under that scenario.
Mr. Chair, yes, we would. I just wonder if I could make one comment. So Peter, Town Council, and I have discussed how not to be in this position again going forward. So I think it's important for the board to know, we're going to back the whole process up to build this, like, by four weeks, so that we're in in position to have these articles in front of Select Board, to give you more time to to vet and discuss.
We appreciate you taking a look at that. Thank you.
It adds, it adds, it compresses, obviously, the scheduling and whatnot, but we're confident we can make that happen. So we're not in this position again.
So would we still close the warrant on the end of August? Or would it close earlier? Would you think?
So what what we were, what we were thinking about is having a draft warrant just for discussion, at least two weeks, if not a month, before we come to have you vote the warrant. And so that's one measure. And another might be, you know, and we're always trying to do this anyway, but, you know, if there's a if there's a specific article that we know is going to be controversial, to get that on your agenda, get a discussion, get some community input before it appears on the draft warrant is our goal.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay. Is that a second, Mr. Brown?
I think.
Mr. Reed, second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes?
I guess we just amended the schedule, but should we also move to table the next agenda item?
Well, we wouldn't be taking up the next agenda item, because we don't have to take that. We could.
So, Mr. Chair, yeah, so you're not going to vote it tonight, but sort of, as I was alluding to before, this is an opportunity for, and I know we're running late on this meeting, but if the board has questions or discussion about any of these articles, that we can, you know, gather that information and consider changes for the warrant, that's coming back for a vote two weeks from now, this is an opportunity to do that.
I would say I had, the reason my questions came, I had had two. And one is the the noise bylaw that has yet to go through the community input process and and just concerns about putting that on there before before we've gone through that process. So the other is the proposal to switch the town clerk from an elected to an appointed position, which, I guess, point of clarification on that one is, I thought that was a town charter. charter provision, and therefore would require, so is that an article enabling or authorizing the Select Board to seek a charter revision?
Yes. It, the wording of the articles asks for authorization for the Select Board to submit a home rule petition to the General Court to amend the charter.
Senator Fernandez's office is currently doing that for Sandwich, so we just get it through. It should actually pass next week. It's just, town meeting would vote it, and then our office would then take it and get it through the legislature.
And the only one, I have a question, and I'd still like to know where the police station's going. Is that ready for disclosure?
So, it is nearing, nearing that stage?
They voted it.
Oh, they did vote it. I left the meeting early. Okay, you want to talk, do you discuss that? Go ahead.
Do you, I'm happy to...
If it's too early that...
It's not too early. So, they had a meeting, the advisory committee met last Friday, and as you all know, they've been working, I think, for the past, well, they've had 12 or 13 meetings. They've put a lot of work into this. They narrowed the search down, or the selection process down to three sites. Ultimately, the site they chose, based on a variety of factors and all, Peter was the liaison and working directly with the advisory group. Ultimately, the site they selected was Brick Kiln Road, right across from what's going to be, I suppose, the future YMCA, and near the high school. So, that portion of Brick Kiln Road. Police Department is thrilled with the location. They think it's going to be perfect. It met all of the requirements in terms of line of sight, access to Brick Kiln Road, not being any concerns. The topography of the site is ideal, so there'll be some potential, compared to the other two sites that were finalist candidates, the topo, topography of this site is such that the site development costs, we feel, would be, would be less. So, it was, I think in the end, the committee did a fantastic job vetting all the sites and came down with the final recommendation and selection of the Brick Kiln site.
That sounds great to me. Is there a way we can now start planning to petition to amend that sewer area, so we can get the police station on the sewer there?
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. We believe we can, we can get a sewer connection there.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, there's a question.
Yes?
My name is Martha Pennington. I just heard something that I just wanted to, you know, ask about. So, the idea that we would go to amend the charter to remove an elected position of the town clerk to an appointed position, why, why are we thinking of doing that?
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
We had the explanation in our packet. It was a pretty good one.
So, yeah, the managing of the town clerk's office has become more and more complex as the years have gone by. We have today an elected town clerk who is outstanding in Michael Palmer. He supports this change, and the challenge that you run into, when we, you know, when we look for division heads for all of our departments, right, we want to hire someone with considerable professional experience. And there's not much of a pool of applicants with professional experience within the town of Falmouth. We have a wonderful town clerk staff, and, you know, their retirement dates play into this, but if we don't have someone in our own office, then it's, you know, it's...
But why isn't that left up to the voters? Why aren't, I don't know if desirable is a word, but competent candidates promoted, so that it can still be left to the voters to decide?
Well, well, that's the point. In order to be eligible to run for election, one has to be a resident, and we...
We just elected someone today and waived that requirement. The new assessor.
Appointed. Right. So, we wouldn't be able to do that with an elected position. The Select Board would not be able to waive a residency requirement for an elected town...
So, what you're saying is, we don't have a good resident who could be elected to that position.
Well, a good example of this is Mashpee just had their clerk retire after 20 years.
Right.
One person, hold on, I'm talking, one, one person...
I'm talking first.
One person ran.
Why would we necessarily adopt the practice of a different town? We're a distinct and separate town.
Well, it's going to come up before town meeting, and you can make your points at that point.
But I just wanted to call that to everyone's attention. That is a big deal.
Well, I think we're aware of it.
Pardon?
Thank you. We're aware of it.
Okay. I don't know if everyone else is aware of that.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any particular questions on the warrant? Otherwise, certainly if anyone does, they can send in comments to Mr. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson Staub with respect to the articles.
Do we still vote the...
No.
Do we still vote the petition articles, or...
Well, we're going to hear...
Yeah, but we still do after the presentations.
No, so the petition articles...
We're going to only hear the presentations tonight.
And the petition articles will appear on the town meeting warrant, because they are, you know, certified by the town clerk. And as a formality, when the, when the board votes the final warrant, the actual numbers will be determined, but those are, those are going on the warrant, no matter what. I would just add, perhaps as a last note, on the articles in general, I think the board's aware you have the draft noise bylaw in your packet, and we will have that public forum to get community input on it, but just, so the public is aware that draft noise bylaw is posted on the website and available now.
And the sound study, the noise study is also posted on the...
Okay, which is a perfect segue into the petitioner with respect to Article 16. Amend official zoning map for a large-scale ground-mounted solar overlay. Petitioner is present?
Yes.
Please identify yourself, come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Select Board. I do have just a summary of some of the comments from Falmouth residents that I'd like to...
Thank you. You can have a little bit of a go through the presentation, we're going to have a quick... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you have five minutes. If you can keep it to that, we'd appreciate it, given the late hour. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we appreciate that, yes. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Richard Hamilton. I'm a resident at Rivers Edge Road in East Falmouth. I'm a proud, longtime resident of Falmouth. I'm retired. I volunteer at the Senior Center as a shine counselor, and I'm really presenting a number of comments that have come from, we'll refer to the group as the Friends of Cape Cod Country Club, virtually all residents, and they had a wide variety of comments, and I tried to put them into 10 bullet points to help, help the Select Board on the issue. I've happened to play at Cape Cod Country Club for approximately 35 years, as well as Falmouth Country Club. I know that really, the town of Falmouth, in my opinion, is very well managed, and your direction and guidance has been outstanding, and much appreciated. Right now, as you know, Falmouth is very fortunate. You own a 27-hole golf course with a drive, large driving range. It's a great asset to the community, but, you know, you might have experienced it yourself, you know, due to its popularity and success, it can be difficult even for Falmouth residents to get tee times. So, I'd like to just sort of summarize 10 key talking points, and, you know, take your questions afterwards. One of the analogies that struck me, as most are aware, you know, the town is a very, again, valuable asset, with the John Neal Youth Baseball Complex on Gifford Street. And unfortunately, that was found to have contamination of high levels of lead and other items, because it was a former dump many years ago. The town is certainly working on that, actively on remediation. But the comment that struck me is, imagine if a resource like that was announced, we're going to put solar panels on it, and we're using the term, a loss of possible recreation area to the town. And we said, you know, the friends were concerned that if the golf course zoning is being changed from recreational use to a very large solar farm, the key point we're making here is, once a recreational area has been removed, it'll never come back. It'll be used for other purposes. Cape Cod Country Club has been a recreational asset for Falmouth for, since 1928. Many people visit Falmouth as a destination. They lodge here, they eat here. It is helping our community financially. And on a typical day in the summer, you'll see approximately 240 players playing on a given day. Recreational space is, has a community impact, and it can be transformative for this community. The impact goes far beyond fostering relationships. It's a gathering spot where neighbors meet, friendships and communities bond. Inclusive spaces are accessible to all ages and abilities, promoting inclusion and equity. One thing that always strikes me, when I happen to see the boys' golf team or the girls' golf team in the spring and the fall, you know, either practicing or having a match. Great environment for the kids. One of the things that several of the members brought to our attention, they said, you know, it's a structured environment for young people, keeping them active, keeping them engaged, reducing engaging, reducing risky behaviors. The outdoor recreational space encourages physical activity, combats obesity, chronic illnesses, stress, anxiety, and depression. I can't tell you how many veterans I've met on the golf course that it's their outlet. Recreational areas can double as a conservation zone, supporting wildlife, habitat, and biodiversity. One of the members that commented, happens to be an aviary, I guess, expert, and he commented, he said, "Rick, you know, many of the bald eagles, ospreys, and hawks actually perch on very tall pine trees throughout the golf course. It's not uncommon for turtles to be rolling across a fairway or green at a given point in time." Other concerns of the friends really is the, you know, if it became a major solar farm, it's the disposal. In 20 or 30 years, the solar panels become decommissioned. Falmouth will face the challenge of solar panel disposal. You know, currently, less than 10% of solar panels are actually recycled. Most of them end up in landfills. Solar panels contain hazardous wastes, glass, aluminum, polymers, silicon metals, strong adhesives, which makes the recycling very expensive and very toxic. High energy user to get rid of them. The majority of the solar panels, I'm sure you're all aware, are made in China. The cost of recycling solar panels can be very expensive. Breaking down those panels for valuable materials becomes very high labor and high energy. Great example to study and read about, one of our colleagues who contributed is a full-time resident or citizen of Las Vegas. He says, "They were a very early adapter of solar panels because of their energy needs." Currently, they are going through a very expensive issue in terms of the dilemma of solar panel farms are coming offline. The solar panel companies have changed hands multiple times over the life cycle of these panels, and many of those companies have go bankrupt at the time when the disposition or disposal of the solar panels come into play because of these companies going bankrupt. Process of preparing the land for the solar farm, and, you know, Cape is fairly flat, but this unique property has an awful lot of rolling hills and valleys, just a few feet actually above the lake sea level, which is interesting.
Mr. Hamilton, you're going to have to finish up pretty soon, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. All right. Let me jump to the summary statement. I think you have the other notes, and we really appreciate the time for you to consider this, but in summary, the Friends of Cape Cod Country Club are asking the Select Board to recommend to the zoning commission and other appropriate boards that the country club not be zoned for a large-scale solar ground-mounted overlay district. We would again ask that the Select Board would consider sending a letter to the Cape Cod Commission, which will be reviewing and voting on the subject this Wednes, this Thursday, excuse me, the 11th, at 3:00 p.m., basically asking your support that the property be remain as a recreational site, as opposed to a major solar panel farm.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll take any questions?
Yep. Mr. Brown?
I wonder if you have really thought through what the alternative is, though. Unless the town is ready to buy that land, we can't really determine the future of that land. It's not really zoned recreation. Recreation is its use, but it's not controlled by zoning. So, a few, several years back, we had a parcel of land on Main Street, a local contractor wanted to turn it into a miniature golf. Neighbors opposed it, and so it got shot down. Then the owner, then another guy came along and wanted to put a Marriott hotel. Neighborhood opposed it, Select Board took the public comment, went to the Cape Cod Commission, shot it down. So, now what do we have? The next thing that comes along, housing. It's a big monstrosity that we weren't expecting, but that's what you get when you say no without another plan. So, if we don't have the money to buy it, we've got to think about what could be there. 500 houses? Is that what we want? Because the feels have made it clear that they're going to sell, so we're trying to make the best of, you know, what's not a good situation. And I hear all your points. I hate to see it happen.
I thank you for your question, and one of the analogies that's in the handout was, not that we don't oppose, you know, or don't support solar, it just, you know, like they did at the Bounce River County Fairgrounds, that seems to have worked out quite well. We have all the, you know, parking lots for the ferries. I mean, that would be a great site, you know, in many cases, if that could be considered, if Falmouth's community would like to have a major solar farm here, we would love that thought. So, we really appreciate your time and guidance, and keep up the good work of helping steer the town, but this would be, you know, as I say, losing recreational space. We're never going to see it again.
I wish we had the money to buy it. We've got so many big things to pay for right now.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Hamilton?
We appreciate your time, and thank you so much for listening to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your...
The next item, petition article number 17, authorize an independent financial and operational audit of Falmouth Public Schools. Ms. Russell?
Hi. This is, I have a presentation, Mr. Johnson Staub, but I don't want to start, Mr. Johnson. Sorry.
Our presentation's got a little...
I'll be quick. I know it's, it's a long one.
I'm hoping I'm still logged in.
You've got five minutes, so just make sure you introduce yourself.
Is that right?
Yeah, they have a...
Yeah, they do. All right. If you don't mind, that would be great. Thank you.
So...
Just get that...
Raquel Russell, town member, precinct four. You do have the presentation, you have technical difficulties, but you do have the presentation in your packets. This is for an audit of the Falmouth Public School system, a comprehensive audit. Several concerns have been raised regarding financial oversight, including how town appropriated funds are spent, compliance with municipal finance laws, and transparency around certain expenditures. An audit will ensure accountability, identify any weaknesses in financial practices, and help restore public trust. While the town and DESI conduct limited reviews, these do not examine the district's internal financial controls, or whether funds are being used effectively. I'll give you a few examples, and if you want me to elaborate on that at the end, I surely will. I'll give you one example of allocation of, a reallocation of funds last year resulted in us losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in circuit breaker reimbursement. That is extremely concerning. And the town did their own single audit, which evidenced that, and I also have records from DESI directly, which will further evidence that. Just based on that alone, we need to see what's going on and how we can better utilize our circuit breaker reimbursements, because that's huge. That's out-of-district special education reimbursement that is set in place for school districts. Another would be, like, another example, $251,000 of in-kind contributions and cash donations were made to the school district, and at no point was any of, were any of those funds approved, presented, and voted on by the school district. I have those records as well. That caught, those records were submitted to the EEC, so that's something that needs to be looked at as well. The town's annual financial audit of the school district is limited in scope and only reviews at a high level the financial statements provided to them by the school district. This proposed audit is an operational, operational and financial audit, looking deeper into specific accounts and spending practices. Additionally, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, also conduct yearly reviews and audits with not comprehen... also conduct yearly reviews and audits, but not comprehensive. And they're limited in how far they can go as well. What areas will the audit cover? The audit will focus on out-of-district special education, transportation, general funding accounts, use of revolving accounts, grant funds, project procurement, whether town appropriated funds were used as intended, and budget to actual spending comparisons. What you see in the petition is gonna be, the actual motion on the day of the town meeting is gonna be a little different. I'm gonna tighten up some of that language for the town members to vote on. The audit will take about three to six months, and hopefully that can be done before any major votes on a budget. For example, a $150 million renovation of the Lawrence School. We need to make sure everything is in order. There's a lot in the capital plan for the school district down the line, and this is just a really good practice. And a lot of school districts do comprehensive audits, five years. Some even do it with the new superintendent is being hired, just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. They're a qualified independent audit, audit firm with experience auditing public school districts, will be facilitating such an audit, and it process will be transparent. Costs can vary. It depends how deep we wanna go, how many years, but can go from $25,000 to $100,000. At worst, on the high end, after speaking to a few firms, $100,000 would be the reasonable amount that this audit would cost. Is the school committee or superintendent in support of this audit? There's been no official vote. However, all public bodies managing taxpayer funds should welcome independent reviews, especially when there are, when there's evidenced red flags. The town's role in overseeing school finances blew my mind. Here we are, we give the school department 60, $52 million, I think, this year, and we have, we can't say anything about how they spend it. We can't tell them anything, unlike every other department due to chapter 71 under Massachusetts general laws of the school's autonomy, right? And that's wild to get into. But what we can do is an audit. We can find out that what we are appropriating these funds for are used properly. And it's never been done, and that's wild to me as well. Towns like Bunsen and Mash, we have conducted similar audits. We did the single audit that was completed this past March, which is concerning, that's especially concerning the fact that the school committee was not made aware of that audit. They weren't made aware of that until I told them. That's concerning. A well-framed audit promotes collaboration and shared commitment to governance. So many positive outcomes can come out of a comprehensive audit. Increased transparency, identification of cost savings and efficiencies, strengthened financial controls, validation that current practices are effective, assurance that funds are being used appropriately, reinforcement of existing policies and procedures, increased confidence in district administration, informed decision-making for future budget. Another concern is the fact that the school district has had four different finance directors in two years. If anybody has ever had a new manager come into your workplace, everybody always has like a different methodology of doing things, right? So this will assure that the controls are, everything's being done properly. Because if things were being done properly, we wouldn't have lost out on hundreds of thousands of dollars in circuit breaker reimbursement funding. Long-term outcomes, sustainable financial planning, stronger community-school relationships, improved allocation of resources to classrooms, enhanced student learning environment and ongoing accountability and oversight framework. An audit may reveal areas for improvement or confirm effective practices. Either way, the outcome strengthens oversight, improves transparency and ensures taxpayer funds are used wisely to support student success. Any questions?
No.
I would just, I'm sorry, did you have anything?
No, I was just saying, it's a good presentation, but.
Technical difficulties, I guess.
Well, we have it in our pack.
What I've been dealing with the past year, I guess, too, right? This, this was not made lightly. There's a lot more involved with red flags. And this was just, this wasn't even me scratching the surface, this was just me glancing at it. I've, the past year, I've had in-depth conversations with DESI, the MSBA. I have records that, at any point, if anybody wants to sit down with me for an hour and two, I would love to show you that and explain exactly what has surfaced. The bright, the good news is, the district has not lost any funding, federal, state. We are actually getting a hun- about a, over a million dollars in circuit breaker, circuit breaker reimbursement this year. When things are allocated properly, the numbers work, okay? I've asked why that was done, and I, in the past 11 months, it's almost been able to answer that question for me. So, hopefully, an audit would be able to clarify that. But at any point, I would love to sit down with anyone to go over any of this. And are we ready to move on to the next one?
I do have a question now.
Yeah, sorry.
So I thought, I heard you say earlier that we did lose out on 200 and something, the circuit breaker fund?
Yes, last year, and I just received actual, another report from DESI, and it appears that that was done the previous year as well. And what's even more concerning is, the district report, so we, what, we completely wiped out the out-of-district stabilization special education fund in one year. That fund had been established in 2015 and had, for 800, with 800,000, gained interest, had over, well over a million dollars. And in one year, the district cleaned that out. And from what I have from DESI directly, it doesn't support having to have cleaned out. If, if you look into Governor Baker's Student Opportunity Act of 2017, every single state in the union should model what we did in 2017 for our public school districts. Massachusetts is, when I done, do, when you do a deep dive, Massachusetts is so impressive with how they treat our public schools and why we're number one. And a lot of that comes from the 2017 Student Opportunity Act, which heavily weighs on special education and covering the costs for districts. We can get into formulas and all that good stuff, but there was no need to hit that fund. There really wasn't. And I can evidence that. I can evidence that, like, all day.
Thank you.
So, it's concerning.
So, let's move on to your next petition article, Ms. Russell.
Good idea, right?
Thank you.
So, next, like, I'm doing a hard launch into town meeting in November. This should be interesting. So, the next article is to request a comprehensive feasibility study of the Falmouth Public School Buildings. You may or may not have seen over the past year, the proposals put forth by the school district. These proposals reorganize and restructure every single school in the district. I've gone back 10 years. I cannot find one single school district that applied for MSBA funding that did not conduct a feasibility study first. The MSBA wants to see these studies to strengthen our application. Without keeping everybody here all night long, what do I wanna go into next? You, everybody can go and see what the navigating the future proposals are. And there, right now, there would have been a merger of two elementary schools had, there was a group of parents, staff members and community members that spoke out at the first sign of this merger. It wasn't gonna work. We were, they, everybody had been telling the school district that for months. This isn't gonna work. These numbers don't work. And we had to fight far too hard for that NESDEC study that cost $18,000, which was really not helpful at all in the long run, but it did prove what we had been saying, that this proposal doesn't work. So, we have nothing to say that the next four proposals are going to work, nothing. The school districts spent $28,000 on a study to decide if they should replace or repair a skylight. $28,000. But yes, we somehow spent $18,000 to restructure every single school in the district with the price have, a price tag of $150 million. The decision to renovate the Lawrence School is being based solely on personal sentiment, because we have nothing to corroborate that that's where we should spend $150 million. Do I love Lawrence? Do I love historical buildings? Yes, I do. Am I ready to ask town, like, taxpayers to spend $150 million because I like it? No. We need to have, this is turning out to be like the high school renovation 2.0. If everybody, if anybody knows about that, it was a nightmare. It ran three years past the due date and $20 million over budget. When we don't have these studies in place, that's what happens. We just need to make sure that if we're gonna restructure every single school in our district, we have professional, objective, not, like, information and studies. This is just absolutely mind-blowing that this wasn't done first. I can really get into it, but like, a feasibility study would include enrollment projections with scenario modeling, facility condition surveys, renovation versus new construction cost estimates, space utilization and educational adequacy analysis, operational cost projections, options with clear pros and cons. That's the problem the school committee is having right now. If you've watched a school committee meeting the past year, it's a mess. I'm, I'm not gonna sugarcoat. They can't agree on anything, because there's no roadmap for them, okay? And even the NESDEC study, there's eight options that don't include preschool or grades five through 12. So here we are, we're gonna decide on grades five through 12 with no data, nothing, to support these changes. There's also a legal aspect to why we wanna do a feasibility study, for example. So, had we have gone forth with the merger, there would have been, anybody could have put forward an immediate injunction. Because what that would have resulted in was special education violations and violations of just not overcrowding and relegating only specific students to lesser instructional programs. The plaintiffs would have had irreparable harm. Educational opportunities lost during elementary years cannot be restored later. Balance of harm would favor the plaintiffs. Plaintiffs face denial of legally required services, unsafe conditions and the loss of educational quality. Public interest supports, public interest supports injunctive, injunctive relief. The public has a strong interest in ensuring compliance with state and federal education laws. That merger would have violated the rights, specifically of our special education students. They would have been receiving services in the hall. Again, no due diligence was being done, and they were just gonna go forward with this. If a bunch of community members didn't speak up, and now we're almost being, we've been mocked by the school committee now as all the same 10 people. No, and these same 10 people have no fear of retaliation by anyone. And that is a growing concern. And there's police reports to evidence that, evidence that against actual teachers that spoke up. So, there's a lot involved with a lot of this, and the whole, the bottom line is, if we're gonna make these changes, we need to do, we need to do it right. We need to have a facilities study, so the school committee has a roadmap, making these decisions going forward, and to protect us legally, right? Because if you go ahead and make decisions and there's student safety, or there's, you know, civil rights violations, that's on you. You, you know? And do we really wanna get into that? The Falmouth High School renovation, there were legal battle, architects being sued, them suing us, us suing them, the contractor later sued us, like, it was a nightmare. You can do a deep dive into that, and we don't want that again.
Okay, Ms. Russell, I think you're at your time.
One more thing. For example, the town of Norwood just completed a school that is a grades five through eight for $100 million, state-of-the-art, net zero. We need to think about that. A renovation of the Lawrence School is still gonna be a fossil fuel guzzler, okay? So there's that as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick question.
Questions.
Where'd, where'd you get the $2 million from?
$2 million? Oh, I spoke to three different consultants. Okay, so that's another thing. So yes, $2 million. And that's on the high end, and that would also include the administration building. When schools have been facing declining enrollment, which we have, one of the first things they do is take their administrative offices and put it into a school. You don't really see standalone administrative buildings anymore. So I think that building needs to be factored into this as well, because maybe we don't need that building. There is room, admin can move to the high school. But again, that's my opinion, right? Let's leave this to the professionals to give us options, set up a formal committee for this feasibility study and do it the right way. Nothing about what has been proposed the past year is the correct way to do things. And even, my only thought process as to why a feasibility study would not be done is 'cause it may not yield the results that certain individuals want to see, and that's, that's not, that's not for them to decide.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You didn't even give me an opportunity to ask you up. So, this is petition article 19, authorize conservation restriction to 300 committee. Okay, introduce yourself, please.
Hey, I'm Eric Cunyevich of West Falmouth. I'm gonna present the two articles, 19 and 20, pretty much together.
I was gonna ask you to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Should be that one. There we go. Oh, sorry, actually, the, this one.
Which one? The House scale?
The WA 20.
WA 20.
Yep. Yes, so, tonight I wanna present first on the conservation of West Falmouth Highway. So this would be a move to formally codify a piece of land that has been pretty much preserved by the town for the last 95 years. So, for context of location, it's 2.8 acres situated at the intersection of 28A, Route 28, and Palm Rav. It abuts forest and farmland to the north, south and east. And the neighborhood currently lacks access to other public open space due to the private property lines. So it's a .8 mile walk to the nearest public way to an open space.
I'm sorry, did, could I ask?
Yeah.
Could you repeat that? It abuts forest and conservation land?
Yeah, so, to the, to the south, you have a stretch of forest and then Peachtree Circle Farm. Then you obviously have the highway, and then the town forest. And then to the north, you have Stone Runner Farm, which is like a small farm.
Okay.
So the land was purchased in 1931 as part of a period where the town was buying a bunch of the land surrounding Long Pond water supply. So it was purchased from Weld and a piece of the Gifford Bowerman family's land. And at the time, there was no legal mechanism for conservation. Conservation commissions were permitted in 1957, and conservation restrictions were introduced in 1969. And so I think this piece of land is probably kinda forgotten about. And like in the past, people referred to it as a tax title taking, but it was purchased in 1931. And it's consistently identified as open space or conservation land on a variety of town and nonprofit maps. So a lot of people already assume that it's conserved. And I think Falmouth is lagging behind its surrounding towns in terms of conservation. So according to the 300 committee, about 22% of Falmouth's land area is conserved, with a goal of 30% by 2030. Also, I think it's important from the standpoint of water protection and biodiversity, both in terms of water quality, but also in terms of recharge capacity. We have super, super conductive soils here, it's glacial moraine soils. And also, it's proximate to Sippawisset Marsh and to Long Pond. And as such, it's important not only from the standpoint of water quality, but also from the standpoint of, with drought and stuff, forests hold a lot more groundwater than, say, like a lawn. It's also near several historical features that are important to the town's economy. Many people come as visitors to see the historic sites and the natural sites around the town. So it abuts Sackinus at Homestead across the street, which is the oldest home in Falmouth and first Cape-style home. And it also butts Stone Runner Farm, which was the site of an old mill. And I think that it's important to enhance these opportunities. It also would be serving for public safety, because it currently is a boundary that serves as traffic calming between the highway and then more developed sites. And it's a site of frequent crashes. Somebody ran over the sign there, like, last week, had to be replaced. And currently, it gets used, people go walking there. There's like trails people have established. It's near some salt pond sanctuary land with Peachtree Orchard there. So it would kinda compound the, the benefits there. And then I'll, if you have any questions, yeah, go for it.
So, so your petition would be two separate petitions, one to grant the petition to the 300 committee, the other to the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to navigate this process, like, and learn as we went. And so we, we submitted both just to kinda give the option of which.
Have you spoken to the 300 committee?
Yeah, so a couple of us spoke to different members of 300 committee. Currently, it sounds like they, they wouldn't like to take the easement, so I think we would opt to go for the, one to the Conservation Commission as the town body.
Are those photos, the last photos, from the property?
Yeah, so this one on the right is from just down the road. There's like a little turnoff where people park. It's by Dana's Kitchen. And then these are from on the property, yeah.
Okay.
Question for, maybe for Town Council. How would this interact with the zero West Falmouth Highway town meeting article passed in November town meeting?
Great question.
Directly at odds, right?
It is at odds. Part, I mean, there are a couple of different issues here. One of the primary issues for me in reviewing this is that town meeting can authorize the Select Board to take a certain action, but it can't direct the Select Board to do anything. So where there's already been a, a town meeting vote and actions taken toward that first vote, the Select Board would have to grapple with what to do with dual competing authorizations. I, I, that would be a, a decision for the board to make, but if there are certain indications that this property has But if there are certain indications that this property has, is too far down the road in being disposed and there are certain indications, the vote of the board to dispose of the property is one indication. Where in the process the town is with the RFP and whether there are private interests that are also implicated in the ownership of the property already, those are all things that will have to be considered. So there are a lot of moving pieces and parts if this were to pass. It would be, it would be messy.
Thank you.
So do I understand, are you going to withdraw article 19 or are you going to go forward with that?
I think for now, we can go forward with it, but perhaps it would be amended.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
I just share some information.
We, we-
As an other-
We had indicated earlier on that we weren't going to take any public comment from, you can certainly share something with us and leave it with us, but we're not going to take public comment on petitioner articles, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to give you some handouts of the Homestead Park that's across the street.
We're, we're, but we'll take your, we'll take the presentation, but no, no oral conversation, no. We're not taking public comment. We had made that-
I understand. I'm asking if it would be all right if I gave you some materials-
Yes, that would be fine. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just in case somebody would like to see it, Arnold Peltzer, the owner of the Homestead, last living.
We can take one of each and pass it down?
Okay.
Do you want us just to pass it down?
Can you just move the staff?
We can take one.
That's great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Yeah. The following warrant article I'm going to go to is Article 21. So this is addressing some of the needs for affordable housing within the town and trying to concentrate town services for efficiency. So this is house scale multifamily zoning, basically, a bylaw change. And this is based on some successful bylaw changes in other New England towns. Up in the Sunapee region of New Hampshire, which also has a large seasonal population, and some other Massachusetts towns have introduced very similar measures. So as is often talked about, is the missing middle? How do we actually go about generating that? And there's a lot of opportunities that exist for expanding affordable housing in very lively neighborhoods and at the same time helping to protect our natural resources. And you can see in guidance from a number of regional planning organizations kind of go along these lines. And compared to our neighboring towns, we have a lot less of kind of that middle housing. In Mashpee, for instance, they have a lot more condo, triplex scale housing. So as has been discussed earlier today, actually, we have an issue of, you know, mansionization. It was highlighted in the 2014 study by RKG Consultants. So landowners and developers are largely barred from building what would be attainable housing. And as such, seeking profit, you know, they build large mansions. And on the same footprint of a house like that, a house scale building, you could fit quite a few units that would be suitable for young families, for working people, and for elders. And you could even have, you know, elderly folks living with their descendants in units. So some examples of kind of the sort of layouts that you can get. Here you have like triplex, fourplexes, courtyard buildings, or duplexes. This would, this warrant article, as it's currently written, would allow up to five-unit multifamily house scale buildings within walking distance of the Business Redevelopment District where at least one unit is affordable to meet SHI standards and the units are sewered and have appropriate capacity as well as water. And the units conform to other relevant bylaws. So this would be, again, highly suitable for young families and you could have grandma living, you know, downstairs from grandkids. And the current way we wrote it is pretty limited in scope. So it's pretty much just a quarter mile from specifically the Business Redevelopment District and where there's currently sewer, which as of now, pretty much is around 230 parcels, which are mostly around Worcester Court down to around Jericho Path. However, we'd be open to like amendments and stuff to maybe expand this if that's up to, if people like that. But, you know, we wanted to put something in that's a little bit smaller just to get the outset. So potentially include like T-Ticket and some other places that are good access to And, you know, I think the voters have spoken, like electing some of the new select board members with this vision of revitalizing businesses that have struggled because of low foot traffic, like in the off season. And also kind of helping to refocus from greenfield development to opportunities for kind of regrowth, whether that's conversions of existing structures or rebuilding of structures. And yeah, that's pretty much my, my presentation. Any questions? Happy to answer. And I'll be working with Jack and stuff to amend this and whatnot to make it into a perfect, you know, package or whatnot.
Okay. Any questions?
Have you presented this to the planning board?
I, I've spoken to some of the planning board members, but I didn't present it in front of their committee.
I like it.
Obviously. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I'm curious how this compares to some of the things we were talking about earlier tonight in terms of, I mean, you're saying up to five units instead of, I guess, duplex, triplex, or up to four in the conversion bylaw, right? So is it just around density or is, are there?
Yeah, so the bylaw that I took this from, it was in Hanover, New Hampshire, and it used, it went up to four units, I thought five units, in order to, you know, incentivize maybe more affordable development. And I think, I think it fits really into what people are talking about earlier, you know, you're helping cluster it around services. So as we expand sewer, it's a bit more efficient than like if we're building stuff in outlying areas that we might never be able to feasibly sewer. And yeah, I think it also can help address the issues with transit because again, it becomes more efficient to run, say, a bus line. So maybe veterans could have a bus come around if people happen to be living in the area or whatnot.
I got one more question.
Sure.
Why is it within a quarter mile of this redevelopment district and not-
Quarter mile is like a urban planning kind of standard for like walkable, like you can take a little short trip to the store. So that's why we use quarter mile. But if we want to do half mile, I actually did do an analysis and I saw if you go up to half mile, it would include parts of Lawrence Neck that might be desirable. But again, we try to like introduce something that's kind of small in scale just to like get a feel for, yeah, what people would like to see. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Entschur, consider vote to approve two additional full-time communication officer positions within the Emergency Communications Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be quick about this because I know it's getting late. So as you all are aware, we currently have nine full-time equivalent communication officer positions. Last year, the communications director, Mr. James Thomas, made a request to hire three, to create three new positions based on workload demands. We also had a consultant, Matrix, do a operational study of the communications department that justified, kind of showed the need based on growth and call volume for additional positions. I made the decision not to fund those positions last year because, quite honestly, as you all likely also know, we've had a difficult time filling the positions that we had authorized of the nine positions. At one time, I think we were down to two, two, two communications officers with, with seven vacancies. I'm happy to report there weren't a much better position. We, we made some changes and at one point, we were fully staffed for about a nine-month period. We had nine communications officers. Now we're down to eight, still making pretty good progress. But again, based upon the workload demands, we're proposing to add, requesting to add two additional positions. We're comfortable, we can fill those positions. We've been working with the police department unions in an effort to get some additional police officers trained to fill per diem slots. One of the trends that we're seeing, it's unfortunate, but it's a trend and it's impacting staffing, is the availability of per diems. Those professional trained dispatchers from other organizations that come in and take shifts. We're seeing a decline in the numbers of per diems. So between this request, if approved tonight for the two additional positions and training additional public safety folks to serve positions on a, as needed basis, we feel we're going to fill the need. I want to make sure I cover all of this. The request is going to be, again, for two positions. We estimate needing approximately $150,000. We're going to seek, pending the outcome of today's decision, to authorize the two new positions. We're going to seek a reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee in that amount. We're confident that'll get us through the end of June 30th, 2026, the end of the fiscal year. The select board approves this transfer. The positions will be filled as soon as possible. It's an urgent, urgent need. We feel, again, and I'll summarize with this, because we have been successful and we have several folks in the pipeline, hiring pipeline already, we feel pretty confident that we'll fill those two positions if we're authorized to add them. And it's going to do, go a long ways towards reducing overtime costs and bringing in, quite frankly, folks that aren't trained, police officers, to fill those slots. And we'd be seeking, if approved, we'd be seeking an appropriation at November Town Meeting this year of $150,000 to replenish the, the fund, the reserve fund transfer. So again, Mr. Chairman and Select Board, it's my request, my ask, that the board consider adding these two additional full-time benefited CO positions within the Emergency Communications Center.
Any questions? No. Ms. Goldstone?
In terms of the need for per diems, would, would adding these two positions essentially eliminate the need for per diems?
We don't think it's going to eliminate it, but it's going to certainly lower our reliance upon per diems. Peter, would you say that's accurate? I don't think it's going to completely eliminate the need.
Yeah, it won't. It won't eliminate the need for per diems as Mr. Entschur indicated. We would be less dependent on them and, you know, really the main thing is we, we want to be in a better position with respect to filling all of the shifts without forced overtime. And right now, we are reliant on a combination of per diems and forced overtime.
You'd have more stability in scheduling and so forth.
Definitely.
Okay.
And that reduction in availability of per diems, would you say that's a trend that the other departments are, are needing those individuals? They're seeing this same increase in staffing?
The other agencies, yes. The other agencies that they work for, yes, that's exactly what's leading to the trend. They're staying put, that they're home agencies.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move approval of two additional full-time benefited communication officer positions within the Emergency Communications Center effective immediately upon approval of funding.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to take item F and, and put it down to the bottom. I'm going to move up to item H, which is discuss potential funding for renovation of the former water department building at 10 Pumping Station Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take this item.
Okay.
And again, I'll try to be brief. Last year, I made the request of, for $200,000 in funding for feasibilities in design funds for two properties, town-owned properties. The first at 10 Pumping Station and the second at 65 Pumping Station Road. The request, as you may recall, was not recommended by the Finance Committee and therefore the request was not considered a Town Meeting. Among the objections raised by the Finance Committee, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend that meeting. I was at another meeting at Joint Base that evening. But as I understand it, talking to the Assistant Town Manager, one of the major objections was that the cost of renovating that historic property was going to be excessive and was not warranted based on the proposed use of the Beach Department, filling, filling those spaces for three or four months out of, out of the year. That says, again, based upon conversations that I've had with the Assistant Town Manager and the Finance Director subsequent. In a meeting with the Beach Committee last year, myself and the Assistant Town Manager did discuss with the Beach Committee at the time that we had intended to apply for another round. parsing it down, a smaller request, maybe focusing just on 10 Pumping Station Road versus looking for funding for both. Since that time, it became known that the School Department, as you all have heard, is looking to repurpose, release the Morse Pond School. And we are in the process now of applying for $150,000 in feasibility monies for that property, looking at best possible use, whatever that may be. One of the potential uses of the Morse Pond Building is for a more centralized, consolidated town hall and municipal offices, one of which could potentially be the Beach Department going forward. I did not submit the second request for funds at 10 Pumping Station Road as part of this year's capital plan. As you all also may recall, last year Town Meeting, we did have funding approved in the amount of $200,000 in contingency funds for the acquisition, should it be needed, of a, of a temporary mobile office unit for the Beach Department if Mitchell Bathhouse were destroyed, impacted negatively by, by a storm. So we do have that as a contingency plan. Just wanted to remind the Select Board of that. I understand the Beach Committee, I see there's several members of the Beach Committee here that have a request they'd like to present to the Select Board. I just want to kind of preview and preface that by giving it some historical overview of where, where we're at today.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider, are you going to make a presentation of some sort to the board at this point? Or anyone else?
Barbara Schneider, Chair of the Beach Committee. And we have to keep, we have to stop meeting like this at these hours. It seems that we get put in nice positions to always show up this late. I, I don't think there's anything we haven't said for two years. We have presented our case. We have asked you to stop referring to us as a three-month operation. We have asked for everyone to appreciate the importance of the beaches, both as a recreational and as a physical protector of our entire town. We have worked our tails off, all members of the Beach Committee, to show you that you needed a coastal resiliency coordinator and that you needed to think about what the beaches bring to this town. It is not something that can survive the way we've been doing it in the Surf Drive Bathhouse. It needs a place where the public can come, ask their questions, buy their stickers, and absolutely be there in many, many months of the year. I am tired of listening to complaints of what happens in Town Hall when we don't have that operation going. You should be tired of hearing it and I ask you to be reasonable. You have a beautiful structure sitting there, which I was at today again, and it is there wanting to be fixed with hopefully community preservation dollars for the most part and in a very good spot. Having 80 staff members show up every morning for 12 weeks to get going and off to the beaches is not going to happen at the Morse Pond School. It's not the appropriate location. This is. Thank you.
So Ms. Schneider, do you have a, an estimate as to what it might cost to make an initial feasibility determination with respect to renovating that property?
In just talking with the DPW Director, he threw out $50,000 as an idea. His concern is the roof immediately. You know that. The roof is in need of being replaced so that damage stops with what's going on there. And it does need to have clearing, a 10-foot area cleared around the building so that they can get up there and do the roof. Those were the things that were discussed. We all stood there together. We all talked about this. It has been looked at by people to determine it is a really good bones building. It's in a great location and it deserves to be repaired. And we don't have, you can say we have $200,000 for an emergency, which the idea was to put us, put the department in a trailer, sitting in the same exact place we're asking you to fix. I, I will tell you, there is no way we're going to go 12 years, which is what you're really looking at, to wait and have Surf Drive, which is a disgrace to this town for people walking in there and having mouse urine. And I'm tired of saying about the mouse urine. Someday you are going to have everyone walk out of that building angry that you are having them work with computers with mouse urine above them. And they, I have photos of it that I just took two weeks ago. Enough. Enough. We can do better. Do better. Thank you.
Ms. Goldstone?
Ms. Schneider, before you...
Don't leave yet.
Part of the plan, so first of all, I'll just say that I agree that a 10-year timeline for a home for the Beach Committee, given what we're learning from the...
The Beach Department, just to call it...
Sorry, for the Beach Department, is late. Also, does not seem appropriate in my mind, given what we're learning about the vulnerability of the Surf Drive area, the fact that we are one five-year storm away from losing a chunk of that road. Yes, the upper portion is less vulnerable, but still, you know, the idea that within the next 10 years, that we're not going to see damage or incapacity in that facility is hard for me to imagine. And so, waiting 10 years for a home for the Beach Committee does not, the Beach Department does not seem like prudent planning. And as you've said, that facility is also not a premier place to have to work or to go to get beach stickers. I'm curious, because the longer-term plan at Surf Drive has been to get modular bathhouse units there. Is there any modular office opportunity on that location that could work for the department?
If we tore down the bathhouse, because you really need that place, that location, then to do that, in all honesty.
There's been...
And also, then it would be a matter of, what the DPW really doesn't want to do is haul things away and put them back, and haul things away and put them back, when you're going to have to do that every winter. And the reason they don't like to do that is that they don't like to store things because they feel that things really get degraded over time by doing that. They have not had good luck. I think we have a manate mobile unit that's sitting right now, that's been in bad repair from having gone through that. So, that's not ideal, especially when you have an option. And I would say, why are we not looking at that option?
Mr. Brown?
I would say, first of all, that I'd like to see us at least bare minimum maintain that building and fix the holes in the roof, clear the grass around the outside of it. I went by there the other day just to take a look at it, and it's a shame to be, you know, neglecting that. So I hope we can get a minimal budget to, I don't know if there's any action required by the Board, but...
DPW is taking care of that right now.
Mr. Chris? Thank you so much.
So...
The next thing, if I could, I would like to say, maybe we should be exploring other locations that might be suitable for temporary, like sharing of the space at the administration, School Administration Building. I'm sure they're not possibly using that whole building. There's got to be places that we can relocate to, a little more creative. Because Pumping Station, even if we were to convince the Finance Committee that it was a worthy investment, it's going to be a long time.
So I just would answer, please remember what happens there every morning from June, well, during some of the weekends, and then starting in late June until now. So remember that you're gathering the entire staff, right? And you need to have a place where that's what you can do. When you stand at Goodwill Park, you look there and you say, this is absolutely the right place. There's the parking, it keeps it isolated, it's got a huge area off to the side where you could actually even simulate, you could have sand, they can go down the road a tiny piece and get in the water and do their swim. You have all the attributes that you need for running that program. You also have a building that would be easy for the public to come to, to buy their stickers, to ask their questions, to get things figured out about their taxes or their, what they're in arrears in. It is a good answer. And it has the great potential, because it's historic, of being funded by the CPC. That's another benefit. It's not like we're saying we're going to the taxpayers for this in a way that isn't already being taken by the taxpayers. They're paying that. That's one of the benefits of that fund. We should be able to use it for that.
Mr. Renshaw, Mr. Johnson-Staub, in light of the fact that it hasn't been included up to this point, what would be the pathway if the Board wanted to look into it, to move it forward, if there was consensus on the Board for that?
So, I think it's early enough in the capital review process that if the Board felt strongly that you wanted to see feasibility study happen sooner rather than later, that we could add it to the capital plan, provided, you know, we're talking 100, under 100,000, you know, 100,000 at most, and I think, frankly, it might be more comfortable to squeeze in 50,000 than 100,000. But we could, we could add that to the capital plan and submit that to the Finance Committee for review for this cycle.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, you had a question?
I was, actually, I was just going to say that, you know, the recommended actions, that's kind of the second one, is to place the topic on a future agenda. I believe that our role is to not act as experts and to listen to our committees. I straight up will just, transparency, I will support this, and I think we should put the second thing to a vote in a future meeting. I understand that's not the point of the discussion tonight, but...
We could vote it today. We could vote it if we so chose.
We have supported it. That's how I got to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, it'll be up to the...
Can I add, could I comment on the Finance Committee part? I was actually told by a person on the Finance Committee that there was no presentation, and so they felt it didn't come with a very good, solid background. I'm going to ask that when it goes this time, it gets a presentation. I wasn't even told, Maggie wasn't there, we were not told it was going to happen. And so, I wish that we would have had a chance to explain why that's a good idea. That might have made a difference.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes, please.
Dr. Schneider, thank you for the comments. So I indicated earlier, I wasn't at that meeting, but I do recall being a participant in drafting the write-up, the project detail. I thought we did a very thorough job with that detail last year. So what, it would be consensus of the Board if the Board opts tonight to direct me to include that $50,000 in the capital spending plan for FY '26. If that's the Board's decision, I think that'd be the easiest path to go forward. And we will have a presentation, because I, and let me, I'll stop with this, Mr. Chair. I was an advocate. I walked that building last year. I know, I know the potential of it. I also realize that, you know, and as indicated, some circumstances changed, and we'll pitch it. We'll pitch it to the Finance Committee, and I'll be an advocate for it again. They rejected it last year for the reasons that I've stated.
Well, we have a, we have a department that is responsible for over $1 million in revenue to this town, and I think $50,000 to at least look into the possibility without having to wait 12 or longer years would be a good idea. So I would certainly support such a direction to the Town Manager.
I would make a motion, then, to add $50,000 to the capital budget to conduct the feasibility study for 10 Pumping Station Road to explore the...
Feasibility...
Feasibility of relocating the Beach Department to 10 Pumping Station Road.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll go to matter I, discuss and consider submitting a letter to the Cape Cod Commission regarding Pure Sky Energy's Cape Cod Country Club Solar Project. Mr. Renshaw?
Mr. Chairman, do turn this over to Mr. Johnson-Staub. He actually has a copy of a draft letter that's connected to this that he'll distribute. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw and Mr. Chairman. So, just to introduce the issue, this was, the idea was raised by John Drewley, member of the Planning Board, as you well know, and also the Town's representative to the Cape Cod Commission. And we are talking about the Cape Cod Country Club Solar Project. And the Commission is well into its review of the application submitted. Matthew Terry is attorney counsel for the developer for the project, and he is here tonight, as you can see. So the issue here is, as you may recall, the Board voted in May to, I think it was May of '24, to support the project and submitted a letter to the Cape Cod Commission in support of the project. The benefits of the project overall are, you know, multiple. It, the develop, the owner is proposing to transfer the land to the Town of Falmouth. A portion of that land would be conservation restricted, but that's actually 41 acres with a conservation restriction on it, 95 acres not subject to a conservation restriction. So after the term of the lease back from the Town to the owner of the solar development, which could be up to 40 years, all of that land becomes available to the Town to use as it sees fit. And so the benefits are, the Town gets conservation land, the Town gets 95 acres to decide what it wants to do with. There's obviously solar energy that's generated. Very importantly, part of the funding plan for the developer is community shared solar, which means that a portion of the energy must be provided to low and moderate income residents, and that results in those residents getting 50% off their entire electric bill, not just the supply, but the entire electric bill. So that's an important benefit that the project brings. The, so that's all by way of introduction. The issue that we're here to talk about tonight is, Mr. Drewley suggested, there's a parcel of land that's now golf cars, golf course property, not included in the solar project, not included in the land, proposed land transfer from the current owner to the Town. And Mr. Drewley brought it forward because it has potential for development for affordable housing. It's 7.3 acres, has some access challenges, but maybe, there may be viable access on a Schumet, off of a Schumet Road. And so the suggestion was, does the Board want to consider writing a letter to the Cape Cod Commission, asking the owner of the property to include that 7.3 acres in the land transfer so that we could develop it for affordable housing now? There's the 95 acres that the Town will ultimately have control over, not conservation restricted, but that won't be available for development for 40 years. So, interesting idea. We asked Town Council to confer with Council for the developer to see if there was an interest in potentially including that parcel in the land transfer, and the initial response back was no. And the last piece that I want to mention before handing out the draft letter, if that's something that you want to consider, is that the viability of this project hinges on federal tax credits, which expire if the project does not break ground. So complete permitting, complete construction financing, and actually be well into construction by July 1. If that doesn't happen, all of the project goes away, all of the benefits that I just enumerated will not come to pass. So there is some concern that bringing this request to the Cape Cod Commission could result in a delay at the Cape Cod Commission and put the entire project at risk in terms of its timeline. I'm sure Mr. Terry could speak to that in greater detail. I don't know if the Chair wants to get into a dialogue with the project proponent or not at this time.
Well, I think Mr. Terry has been here until 10:30, so I'd certainly like to give him an opportunity to speak. But just to clarify, this would in no way change our position with respect to the support of the project. It's merely asking the Cape Cod Commission to discuss with the applicant the possibility of doing something with that hole four, I think, which is...
That's, the letter I drafted is exactly as you described. It still supports the project and asks for this consideration.
But we do have this, or at least the developer has this stamachly sword over their head with respect to any delays, and it's certainly been delayed considerably up to this point. So...
Can I ask a question before we get going?
Yeah.
Is this the same piece of property that's on the other side of Boxbury Hill Road from the main part of the, where the Battery Center is?
It's 83 Boxbury Hill Road. I can, I can pull up, it's, it is in your packet. There's a map in your packet. I can pull it up on the screen if you'd like.
That's all right, I'll take a look.
I didn't actually see the map.
Because, you know, when we first had the first proponent of this project come to meet with the Energy Committee, they, and Housing Committees, and the initial outreach was, you know, very generous, and they said that there is this little extra piece of land that's not involved with the, with the solar farm that could be used for affordable housing, and it was a selling point. So, just want to bring that up.
I will say, I think there were some people in Town who were of the thought, mistaken, that that parcel was going to be included and possibly be available for housing.
Yeah, I don't really think it was mistaken.
Well, again, Mr. Terry can speak to that. Mr. Terry?
Sure, yeah. Now that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't see the map in here.
If you do have the map, because we don't have it in our packet.
Yep.
I think that's what he's pulling up.
Jeez. Thank you. So can you see that?
Yes. That 7.3 acre?
Yep, 7.3 acres in green.
I appreciate it. For the record, my name is Matt Terry from the Law Firm of Amen Clower here in Falmouth. So a couple of points for the Board's consideration. The first is procedural. As Mr. Johnson-Staub had mentioned, we're in the midst and nearing the end of a lengthy process with the Cape Cod Commission. We have the full Commission hearing this Thursday afternoon. We concluded our fourth subcommittee hearing earlier this evening, where the subcommittee that was charged with doing an initial evaluation of our project application voted to recommend its passage to the full Commission as part of the Commission's consideration on Thursday. From a procedural standpoint, what has come up a number of times during these four subcommittee hearings, and explained both by Commission staff and by the subcommittee chair to the other commissioners, is that the Cape Cod Commission can only consider the project that is before it. It can only consider the five parcels that were submitted by my client, Pure Sky, as part of the project application. So procedurally, to send a letter to the Cape Cod Commission asking to include a legal parcel that is not part of the project and is not part of the application, the Commission cannot bring in a private piece of property that is unrelated to the project and the application and include it in a condition. We, as the applicant, cannot do so for a couple of reasons. One, because it is not part of the project, and the applicant has reserved its use of this 7.3 acres for future determination. And even if we were to try to bring it in, it would mean withdrawing our application two or three days before the conclusion of the process, going back to the beginning with the Cape Cod Commission, and potentially putting the viability of the project at risk. Because as the Chair had mentioned, it's been delayed quite a bit. I've been working on this personally for about six years now. And so, one more year, especially in the very uncertain regulatory environment in which we find ourselves these days, may spell the end of this project. What is likely to happen if the Select Board votes this evening to send this letter is that the Commission will be advised by staff that, notwithstanding the sentiments included in the letter, that the parcel cannot be included in the application... in the letter, that the parcel cannot be included in the application, in the project consideration, in the hearing, or in any decision that the Cape Cod Commission renders. A couple of just quick substantive points. In speaking with my client this evening after our commission, subcommittee hearing, they can't, the, because of the uncertain regulatory environment and steps that are still to be taken with Eversource and the group study that this project is currently in, the financial viability of the project is still uncertain. And this 7.3 acres has been reserved by the applicant. It's potentially offset what might be unexpected costs or expenses, reduced income that would keep this project economically viable, giving them the flexibility to, to sell this parcel or to put it to other economically productive uses. As I stand here before you, it's too early in that part of the process for them to make that analysis, but what it does do, given that uncertainty, is again, put the property, or the project, rather, in jeopardy if the flexibility allowed by the 7.3 acre parcel were to be removed from the equation. The final other procedural point is, as had been mentioned at the outset, there was a letter of support that the board approved as part of the, the commission process this time around. We also have a non-binding memorandum of understanding that we entered into with the town a few years ago now, that is, has been submitted to the Cape Cod Commission as part of our application packet. The concern is that sending a letter to them a couple of days before the full commission is set to deliberate, that potentially sends somewhat of a mixed message from the Board of Selectmen that might be perceived to be somewhat at odds with the letter of support and the non-binding memorandum of understanding, because it proposes a change to essentially the arrangement that we've all been operating under relative to the five properties that were included in the application to the commission, and as part of the non-binding memorandum of understanding, and all other public documents that, that my clients have produced over the course of the development of this project. And that confusion from, officially from the Board of Selectmen, might cause commissioners to question how supportive the Board of Selectmen might be. So those are all the points I wanted to bring to your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, procedural substantive or otherwise.
Counsel, do you have anything to, to add or to help us as we go forward? I accept what Mr. Terry has said with respect to, you know, how he views how the commission would have to deal with this. I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts for us.
The only thing I would add is that in the three and a half years that I've been working on this project, at no point has this been part of any of the negotiations between the town and the solar company at all. This only came to my attention a couple days ago, on the eve of approval. And I, I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this has never been part of any conversation.
So I just have a general question. I thought the, my friend is a clean energy lobbyist. I thought these tax cuts are already rolled back.
No, so my understanding, I'm not a lobbyist, I just work for a solar company in the capacity as their local attorney, but I certainly checked in with them right away to see if the project that we've been working on for six years was in jeopardy. Their analysis based on the current facts is that it is not. That's always subject to change, as we've learned that, how quickly things can change from day to day. The programs that they are looking at are largely, if not exclusively, state-based tax credit and state funding. So there isn't a federal component, at least, that has changed or that is, that's applicable to the project that has had an impact on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you had a question?
Could you remind me, please, what was the name of the previous entity that owned, original proponent of this project?
Sure, it's still the same company, they just rebranded. So Pure Sky Energy is the current name. Prior to rebranding, they were known as Amp Solar. So they, they underwent some higher level corporate reorganization. It's an, it was an international company, it was Canadian. And when they spun out their U.S. subsidiary, they rebranded it to Pure Sky Energy, but it's been the same consistent corporation and leadership the entire way through since I started working with them in 2019.
And you've been with the project from the outset?
From the outset.
And do you remember the name of the person who came around for Amp Energy that was the initial outreach person?
Evan Turner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he still around?
He is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because he did make some reference to this property in the initial outreach meetings, and it was very appealing. And so that's why I think it's coming back to haunt you.
Yeah, it may be part of the reason why he's no longer with the company.
Okay.
So I guess where we are is, you know, when, when we had a meeting, I did ask the town manager and assistant town manager to draft up a letter requesting the, the inclusion, or that the, that they ask the developer to consider it. I will say that initially I was impressed with what Mr. Druley said, but I will say that I think some of the things we heard here tonight have caused me to change my mind in, in, in certain respects. And I am not sure that I would support sending the letter at this time. So that's just my feeling.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick questions here.
Sure.
The Cape Cod Country Club currently owns that 7.2 acres, correct? It is not part of this golf, or excuse me, solar part, project?
It's not part of the project at this point.
It's part of the purchase and sale agreement, though.
Correct.
But it's not offered as part of the development.
Can it be offered as something separate for our, to attain our, to attain the property and use for affordable housing, separate from solar? Or are they, do they have to be combined? Why are we combining them if they don't have to be combined?
I don't think they're being combined. They're just not included. That, that particular parcel is just not included in what the Cape Cod Commission is going to be determining with respect to the solar, solar property.
I'm sorry, is that correct? My understanding was that this land was not part of the land transfer?
That's correct, yeah. But I think what Mr. Reed might be getting at is that that doesn't foreclose the possibility.
Of future action unrelated, but, sorry, I was just, Mr. Brown, you had said it's part of the purchase and sale, but I think it's not part of the land transfer, is what I thought.
Correct, yes.
Correct, it's been excluded from the, the deal with the town. Because it's not needed for the project.
If, if I may, there's, there's the current owner's purchase and sale agreement with the solar developer.
Right.
Right? And then that's a separate transaction from the solar development and the land transfer to the town.
Yes. So the total acreage of the Cape Cod Country Club is 145 acres. My client is under contract to purchase all 145. 137 of those acres are included in the project application to the Cape Cod Commission and have been included in discussions with the town for the donation.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. As much as I would like to push this, I feel like it's not really right.
Yeah, I wish it had come up sooner, and I wish.
It came up six years ago, I wish I continued to pay more attention six years ago.
You know, I mean, and there's certainly a possibility at, at some point in time that, you know, that the developer may, may work with the town to, to develop it.
Can we get a first rate of refusal?
But I do think it is a little late in the game, and as unfortunate as it is to not have this parcel, I, I would not be in favor of sending a letter at this time.
Yeah, I think we missed our chance, it's way too late.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve such a letter at this point? Okay.
No, I, I agree. I, I appreciate Mr. Druley's attention to, to affordable housing options. I very much appreciate Mr. Johnson Staub and Town Manager's office for very quickly drafting a letter for our consideration, but I, I think this would be throwing a wrench in the works of, of a project that's, an important project that's very close to completion.
You know, and, and I think it's, it would send the wrong message to future developers with respect to, you know, how the town of Falmouth, you know, plays with, with developers going forward. So I think it would send a bad signal to future developers, so.
I agree.
Do we have to do a motion to not?
Motion not to.
A motion to not make a motion.
Motion not to authorize the select board chair to sign a letter to the Cape Cod Commission related to the Cape Cod Country Club solar project, is what's in our packet as an option.
Is that your motion?
I, I will make that motion, sure.
I'm unhappily seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, I'm not sure it's necessary, but we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No to the no.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you vote no?
I voted no, to the no.
Voted no to the no. So a double negative, what does that mean?
To the degree.
You wanted to send the letter.
I wanted to send it, but I, I understand the board's position, so.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you.
Now for what you've all been waiting for. The discussion of the Town Manager's annual performance evaluation. Let me get my notes here. Okay.
Always cleans the room out.
That's a good thing, that's a really good thing.
So it's a, it's a little unusual in that we have two sitting members here who were not part of the evaluation, because they were not on the board during the time covered by the evaluation. Nonetheless, they are part of the process, and they have received the summative evaluation that was, was prepared by myself in accordance with the Town Manager's contract. I was, I took everyone's evaluations, Ms. Goldstone's, myself, Mr. Brown, Nancy Taylor and Scott Zalinski's, and I collated them all, and they are all on your summative review. Just for the record, we looked at 11 separate items. Knowledge, productivity, decision-making, communication, oral communication, written communication, financial administration, leadership, public relations, work relationship, staff development and training, personnel policies and goal evaluations. I'll just, I think, summarize the findings. With respect to knowledge, the, some of the statements, Mr. Renshaw continues to demonstrate a high level of understanding Massachusetts finances, policies, processes, resolutions, state and federal laws and regulations in the town of Falmouth's operation. His commitment is to a high level of expertise, and his position speaks to his ongoing ability as an outstanding leader. He brings a wealth of ideas and best practices from his previous positions, and that is a resource for Falmouth. And finally, when he encounters an unfamiliar idea, he is quick to say, I'll look into it. The overall rating for that knowledge was 3.5. Respect to productivity, some of the comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can we just clarify, out of four?
Yes, thank you. 3.5 out of four?
No, out of 10.
It sounds less impressive without that.
I don't have in front of me the actual evaluations, but they range from, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 3 being exceeds expectations, I think, and 4 being exceptional, so. And we didn't have anything under 3, so I'm not going to talk about 2 or 1. Thank you. Productivity, he consistently consults with his team and those with additional content area expertise. Mr. Renshaw consistently completes tasks in a timely manner and keeps the board advised as to progress. His, and I think this is something we all realize and appreciate, his desire for and reliance on data and dashboard measurements has been a major improvement to the functioning of town government in general, and various departments in particular. And that overall rating was 3.7 out of 4. Decision-making, Mr. Renshaw makes informed decisions based on feedback from a variety of sources, consults with his team of department chairs and solicits relevant information, shows excellent understanding and judgment in the decisions and recommendations he makes. Overall rating was 3.8. Oral communication, Mr. Renshaw is a very adept communicator and committed to expanding the select board's desire for expanded community engagement. He is an active listener and reports to his staff, and he excels in oral communications. The overall rating was a straight 4. Written communication, Mr. Renshaw's written communications are well organized and understandable. His reports and presentations are well-prepared, organized and informed by data. He is extremely timely in responding to inquiries from either the select board or the public, and his written communications are clear and concise. His responses to emails from residents and to select board members are clear and concise. The overall rating was 3.5. Financial administration, Mr. Renshaw has established a workable method for department heads to explain their reasoning for budget requests, and where necessary has made decisions against those recommendations where, in his opinion, the financial burdens to the town is too great. That overall rating was 3.7. Number seven, leadership. Leadership factor is the most important, and feedback received from staff and department chairs is indicative of a very strong leader. Mr. Renshaw demonstrates a high level of respect for his colleagues and staff. In two years that he has been here, Mr. Renshaw has developed into an exceptionally dedicated and respected leader. His collaborative relationship with assistant town manager and his willingness to listen and learn from senior staff and to take responsibility when errors are committed by those under him are the earmarks of a truly effective leader. The overall rating there was 3.9. Public relations, Mr. Renshaw is a good public speaker, always presents himself in a professional and respectful manner, often recognizes competent, effective, professional accomplishments. For, for his staff, he represents the town and is respected and very responsive to input and feedback. In the past year, there have been a number of problematic incidents, such as the John Yo baseball fields, where Mr. Renshaw has very adequately represented, and very importantly, where necessary, protected the town's public image. He is willing to sit with press and community leaders to explain the town's position, and the overall reading, rating was 3.6. Work relationships, Mr. Renshaw is constantly finding creative ways to implement select board strategic plan into daily activities and budgeting of departments. The overall rating there was 3.7. Staff development and training, many of the commentators felt they didn't have enough information to make very definitive comments with respect to that one particular factor, but one that was made is that Mr. Renshaw is a strong supporter of upward mobility of his staff, and we have seen that in, in many of the matters that have come before the board, but the overall rating there was 3.2. Personnel practices, Mr. Renshaw has successfully demonstrated his strong ability. In labor relations, he works closely with, very closely with personnel departments, made key hires. And Mr. Renshaw is a superior administrator, consistently exceeded standards and is always looking to improve, which is the mark of a truly great administrator. The overall rating there is 3.5. And goal evaluations, 3.5. Goal evaluation, overall rating is 3.5. We've seen Mr. Renshaw's goals, and we've seen his very honest and, and candid response to those goals, and where he has achieved them, and where he has not been able to implement them for one reason or another, and we compliment him for a very detailed anal- And we compliment him for a very detailed analysis of his goals. And I know that we will be discussing them this year going forward and have a better plan for, for dealing with them, you know, in, in the future. Summary evaluation, I believe Mr. Renshaw's greatest strength is his personal integrity and commitment to supporting his staff. He is a superior administrator and consistently exceeds standards and is always looking to improve, which is the mark of a truly good administrator. He is a strong leader for the town of Falmouth, knowledgeable, growth-oriented, empowering staff and committed to engaging in our community. He is approachable, knowledgeable, very responsive. His leadership is his greatest strength. I could not more be pleased with Mr. Renshaw's leadership in his role as town man. Which I think was really quite, when I looked at it, I really thought that summed up completely. So.
He's the town man.
He's the town man. So the overall rating, when we put all of that together, was 3.6, but I will note that it was just a tick below 3.7. And I think it is a very, very positive evaluation. And I appreciate the board's putting forth their individual evaluations. I'm going to ask the board to acknowledge receipt of the summative evaluation that's in your, in your packets. And even though you weren't part of the process, I'm going to ask you guys to, to sign off on that.
I'll save you the top two line.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, so thank you for reading all, through all 11 categories. I appreciate that. It means a lot to me. Thank you. So it, I, I think a manager is only as good as the supporting folks around him, and I've got two great ones here sitting next to me tonight. Have a great staff. I want to thank the board. I am looking forward to, going forward, collaboratively coming up with these goals. No, no slam against the way it was done in the past, but I think the best goals and objectives are set when we're able to sit around a table and kind of talk about them and have feedback, back and forth discussion. So I look forward to that opportunity. But thank you again for the evaluation. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you and I look forward to it.
It's been a pleasure. I think, I speak for everyone, they can say the same, but it's been a pleasure working with you this past year. I'm sorry that the evaluation was as delayed as it was. I know you were anxious to, to get it done as we all were, but it's, it's very positive and we look forward to a, I don't know how much better we can do, but we'll, we'll try.
Thank you. I'm summarizing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job and a key indicator of success is the lack of attendance for this part of the agenda.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Even the enterprise didn't stay around.
I will say, I don't know who it was, but somebody phoned it in. A lot of those were one-sentence answers, so I think I know who it was, but not out.
I, I have, well, first of all, congratulations and thank you. I think speaks volumes that so many of the comments really hit on the same points, very consistent and, and very positive. And the couple of places where, and I'll own being, being one of them, a few of us noted we didn't feel like we had a lot of, of, I guess, data or evidence to work with, other than kind of secondhand, was in terms of relationships with those that you're managing. And would love to see some, some element of 360 review perhaps incorporated going forward to just have a little bit more information in those, those areas, because I do think they're important areas. I'd be curious whether the, the rest of the board would be...
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly think that was a consistent, you know, comment in the evaluations and, you know, I think keeping us advised as to what you're doing in, in those, in those particular areas, you know, would, would, would help us be able to score it better and evaluate it better, so.
That'll be a focus.
Yep.
You know, it's a pretty good evaluation tool, though. It's had a lot less holes than ones we've used in the years past, which...
It's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.
11 areas is...
Well, we got that out. Mr. Renshaw, we have minutes. Does anyone have any corrections? Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye? Okay. Town manager's supplemental report.
Two quick reports. Just want to remind the board and the public that on September 20th, which is a Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00, we're currently scheduled, on track to have our strategic planning workshop. Thank you, Peter, to reserving the Herman Room of the library. I think that's locked in right now. So, yeah, so Saturday, September 20th, looking forward to that. And as you all know, Collins Institute, UMass Boston, is going to be facilitating the, the discussion. And I look forward to that and working again with all of you.
Are we going to be having an agenda for that and who's responsible for putting that together?
So we have a scoping meeting and kickoff, I should say, a kickoff meeting tomorrow with the consultants, Peter and I. So we'll, we'll take a, we'll, we'll draft an agenda based upon some of the scoping and discussion. The consultants have already kind of laid out what I think is a good, strong foundation of the agenda. And it's going to be a multi-session engagement, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll take a shot at drafting an agenda. The other comment really, this is going to be our third annual employee appreciation picnic. I always look forward to these. Select board encourage you all to come out Friday, September 26th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Goodwill Park, the Pavilion. So please, if you're available, stop by and get a burger or a hot dog. And this year, thanks to Jim Guzios, pulled pork is going to be on the menu, so.
Nice, nice.
We're going to do a pig in the ground, but that took eight hours and we're concerned about...
I have a pig roaster, but it only takes four and a half hours if you want to do it next time.
If you really want to make it fun, give everybody the rest of the day off afterward.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a great, it's been a great hit. You know, we received a lot of comments and I think town had done it a while ago, but was, had kind of stopped and this would be the third annual, so a lot of good comments about it from the staff, so.
Any select board reports?
You guys got anything to report?
No, I think we're quiet on this end.
I'll give you, I'll give you one quick one that...
Please.
I met with some, a few members of the Assembly of Delegates today to talk about their luxury real estate fee that they're trying to support. You know, Falmouth proposed our own back in spring of 2024. It was not passed through the legislature, but it still remains on the, on the request list. The county assembly members that are trying to push it forward are just seeking to bolster what we've done and not take away from it. And they're trying to tailor something broadly that can be supported by all the towns. I did hear some feedback from Provincetown, who I guess has been trying to work on this the longest, almost 10 years, I think she said. So they have some specific language that they want to maintain, which is not really in tune with everybody else's. And another town, I'm not sure if it was Truro, I think, they want to go to 3%. So there's a couple of differences of opinion, but the idea is just that they just want to be more supportive of it. And then Julian Seer was on the call and he said that even though the, the Seasonal Communities Act didn't make it with, the element of the Seasonal Communities Act that had the opportunity to include this luxury real estate tax was removed along the way, it may make a comeback in the next version. So if we're not successful with that, then we'll, we'll keep chipping away at it with the next version of the...
So the only...
Luxury, the, the term luxury, what, what are they referring to when they're talking about it's only going to be on houses over a million dollars?
It starts at a million and anything that exceeds the million dollar minimum would be taxed at half a percent. And then if it goes up to a million and a half, it goes to a million and a, one and a half, and then if it goes to two million, it goes to 2% I think, to graduated...
On the buyer.
The seller pays it.
Well, at the end of the...
That's how we...
You know, at the end of the, at the end of the day, you know, the buyer's paying. The seller has to, you know, the seller has to pay.
Right.
There's a negotiation, but, you know, I'm still concerned about the ones less than a million dollars. I'm not sure why they need to be, be off the, off the table.
You can look at the campaign finance lobbying of the real estate industry.
Yeah, well, no, I know. But, but, but the other thing is I, a lot of people won't consider a million dollar house a luxury house.
Oh, well, I mean, I don't think it is.
Exactly. So anyway.
That's why it's a minimal amount on that.
Look, we've got to get them...
It's got to start somewhere.
You know, in the end, you've got to pay 2% of your transfer fee to the land buyer.
Yeah, the whole thing.
The whole thing. Nobody's questioning that. All right, any other future, any reports? No.
I missed an announcement earlier, but might see a couple of you tomorrow afternoon at MBL for the Jewel Cobb Society Civic Engagement Event.
We have a tour of, well, that's Wednesday.
That's Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, I have it on my calendar, so I may try and get over there. So just in the future, I thought we were going to try to list future agenda items?
That's on me.
Okay.
It was a miss in the agenda preparation this time, but we'll get it, we'll get it on there next time.
All right.
I have a note to myself. We'll get it done.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now that we're coming to the evaluation...